All right, good evening. It is 6:34. We're calling the October 28th, 2025. Town Council committed the whole meeting to order. We have all councilors present except for Councilor Parker, who is at TBCCA, and I believe she will be joining Zoom after she adjourns from that. All right, up first is Calendar and Communications. Councilor Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to share?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Council Boarder Lynn.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up about one of my communications that I had stated on Juddson Ave., where folks are, they have the cracked sidewalks that they were self-repairing, and the flooding that they experienced down there. I guess there was a study, and it's still sitting kind of like that. I don't know if the town manager, I will send an email to see if there's any updates or plans for that. Let's see. Also received some communications about concerns with the SNAP program and the government shutdown, and folks that are in dire need. And towns, you know, are looking at ways of helping the communities. So I'm hoping, I know we allocated some money forward, so maybe under, the town manager might be able to help, you know, let us know what we're doing here in the town of Groton to help our community. I got some communications about the seawall debacle and concern. Also, I'd just like to personally address, it is so important that when you have a right to vote, that you have the fair and equitable access to do such. And as we have both municipalities, meaning the subdivision of the city and the town voting in the same election this year. It was brought to my attention because of my son, who's considered an active-duty naval midshipman and a college student. And he's up in Maine, and he wants to vote. And he ordered his ballot, oh, I don't know, two weeks ago. And if you click the state website link, it runs you through the whole thing, and it's a great resource, right? Like, you don't have to go into the town clerk's office or the city clerks, because you're in a different state. And being that we are a military community, and we've been, I've been a military family for many, many, many years here, having that accessibility is vital. Because by the time you come back, you don't have time to do such. So we have early voting, but kind of hard to get six hours from Maine. With that, there's little to no communication or postings, and I screenshotted all the clerk stuff online and all the websites. And even, even once you finish the state application, there's nothing that states it there either. If you live in the city, as many of you know, you're able to vote in the town and the city election. But when you go onto the state website, one would think that when you hit that button, you're going to get both. No, that's not the case. In fact, you only get the town ballot. So my son just got his ballot, and he's calling me because it's his first time voting in a municipal election. So we were FaceTiming, making sure he signs the envelope, sticks it in correctly, yada, 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 right? And he's like, "Mom, I don't have a city ballot." And I'm like, hmm, because I brought this up recently. And in fact, no, they did not. And so there's nothing up on the city, like, website. There's not a lot of information on the town website. And so I did contact the Secretary of the State and the Lieutenant Governor, and I'll be emailing our state reps. There needs to be a way where, when you go onto that state website, if they physically can't do it because of technology, well, then you need to have a disclaimer. If you live in the city and you are requesting your ballot, something should pop up and say, "You're not done. You're not going to be able to get your city ballot unless you contact the city clerk, because we just don't have the technology or haven't set it up yet," for whatever reason. I did contact the city clerk. She was very friendly, went over it, and said she tried to talk the state. So I'm going to be reaching out to the state reps and trying to propose a bill to get this changed, because there are other seven other municipalities like ours.
Thank you.
So voter disenfranchisement, we need, we can do better.
Your time has expired.
And it needs to be advertised, and it's not.
Council Pacino, you have the floor now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have it in the pass.
Thank you. Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did two events this week, or in the past week. The first one with Councilor Parker was the TBCCA Elected Officials event, which was very, very interesting. And it was a visit to their location up in Norwich, and learned way more than what I had learned before, just knowing them from our head start and early head start little learners programs about their community services, employment training, energy assistance, Family Bridge, WICs program, the Meals on Wheels program. So it was very educational and a little possibly horrifying with the cuts in government funding, because 70% of their funding comes from the federal government. So very worried for them about what their future will be, but very encouraged by the staff and the professionalism and how they presented everything. So it was a very, very good visit, and really opened my eyes to the full services that they had. And then the second event, which was the Dr. Michael Luther King 44th Annual Scholarships Award Ceremony, that Councilor Parker, Councilor Rusk, Councilor Pacino, Councilor Good, Councilor Boarder Lynn, and I all went to, along with the town manager, last Thursday. It was a terrific event for Groton students, got scholarships. It's amazing to listen to their stories. They all have to get up and speak in front of 650 people. So that was quite an honor and a great event to go to in that kind of a, thank you.
Thank you. Council McBride.
Thank you. The only event I have to mention is we had a library meeting last night, Councilor Parker, Councilor Good, and myself. We met with representatives of the Bill and Memorial Library and Mississauga Library, discussed for a good length of time some of the processes we're trying to come up with a recommendation to provide to council, a better way to properly handle how we can allocate budget to those two libraries, along with the Groton Public Library. So it was very, very, it was a great meeting, and look forward to the next one coming up with a recommendation to the council. Thank you.
Very quick question on that. Do you think we'll have that done by the end of our term?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to add to Councilor Jones and Councilor McBride's comments.
Thank you. Councilor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to also touch on SNAP benefits. I just attended a meeting this week regarding SNAP benefits, which has been very fluid, especially in the last week. What I have learned this week is that SNAP benefits will, if the government continues to be shut down, SNAP benefits will not be issued in November. So if you have SNAP benefits on your card, there was a question whether or not they would go away. According to the government right now, they will not go away. So if you have accrued SNAP benefits, they will not go away. You will not get more. I still would recommend using them up. If you need food to want Groton or Connecticut 211, definitely go there and look up food pantries and meal sites. United Way of Southeastern Connecticut has where to find food. So if you look up United Way of Southeastern Connecticut, where to find food, the mobile food pantry schedule is on there, as well as any open meal program in New Lenning County. We, there is a mobile food pantry coming up in Groton that was based on money that was allocated by this council. It will be November 10th from 4:30 to 5:30. So please come out to Thrive 55 and get some food. No questions asked at any of the mobile food pantries for United Way, and all of the rest of the dates are on the site. And I agree with Council Boarder Lynn on the fact that the state is not issuing both city and town ballots at the same time. You get your town ballot, but you don't get your city ballot. I was made aware of that this week as well. And there has not been a solution yet, which is very problematic. So thank you for bringing that up. It is definitely an issue. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I attended the christening of the submarine Utah. I was so proud of our workers at Electric Boat and that they build these massive submarines. And it just made me feel so proud to live here in Groton, Connecticut, the submarine capital of the world. If you are affected by the government shutdown, I would say to please reach out to Groton Human Services, as well as the United Way. And I want to tell our community to please go out and vote. Early voting is happening right now at the Community Center, which is located next to the town hall. And your local polling location is where you would vote on the first Tuesday of November. And I would also like to take this time to send my thoughts and prayers to our sister city, Kingston, Jamaica, who at this time is just being pummeled by a Category 5 Hurricane Melissa. And my thoughts have been with them, and when they came to visit us in here in Groton, and my thoughts have just been with them ever since I had heard about this. So keep them in mind, and in your prayers.
Point of information.
Your question.
Or would it be possible to announce the Raheem Carter retiring of the jersey that's happening Friday at the high school?
I wasn't aware of that, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I say it?
You just did.
I just was wanting to give more information.
Friday at the high school?
Is it okay that I, can I say it, please?
You have used your time, but yes, you may.
It's for the sake of the community.
You've used your time, but yes, you may.
Thank you for the grace. I just want to also remind people that Friday, many might know Rashad Carter and Raheem. They were both twins that grew up here in Aquanet Bridge. They were friends of mine. I went to high school with them both. Raheem Carter succumbed to stomach cancer many years ago, and was, just had been recently sworn in as a New London cop. He was a star athlete at Fitch High School. His nephew is Rashad's son, which is also Raheem, who's been wearing the number jersey up there. And they're, they're going to, the Board of Ed voted to retire that jersey on Friday. So I just wanted the community to know. I plan to be out there to support the family. And I think that's just a good event that kind of all unifies us together. And I just wanted to put the word out there. Thank you.
All right, moving on to approval of minutes. Council Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes, October 14th, 2025.
Second.
By Rusk, second by Good. All right, not seeing any hands. We're going to take a vote on 2025-990, October 14th, 2025 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight to zero to zero. All right, we're on to new business. Mr. Burr, would you please alert me when Councilor Parker arrives? Okay, thank you. New business, our first item on our packet is 2025-962, the Board of Education Operational Review Preliminary Draft Update. Mr. Burr, do you want to give a background on some of this?
Yeah, I'll give a little bit of an intro. The Town Council had previously directed staff to contract for an operational review of the Board of Education's policies, procedures, and financial data for fiscal years '23 and '24. The estimated cost for the study was $75,000. We've spent about $55,000 to date. Joe Centafanti is here to present where we're at so far in the draft document, and our Dean Morrison, our finance contractor, will be up here, too. I do think it's important to note that Board of Ed's finance office has had significant turnover in the last years. This has been going, has been going on. So we're still receiving some data at this point that's not included yet. What I'm looking for tonight is some direction from the council on whether you'd like the study to continue, to wrap in subsequent information received, or if you want to stop at this point. And then another thing you might want to consider is asking the Board of Ed for an update on where they're at on adopting policies, especially with some feedback directly on the ones recommended here in this report. But I'd like to invite Director Morrison and Joe Centafanti up at this time.
Point of information. Your question. Has this preliminary draft been given to the Board of Education as of yet?
It's in the packet, and I talked to Susan. She was aware of it, yes.
So they've had a chance to review it?
I don't know if they've reviewed it or not, but...
Okay.
It was in the packet that went out to them.
And my last question, did we invite them to come?
No.
No.
This was a council action.
Well, not all the council members agreed to that, just to be clear.
But as a...
Consensus.
Consensus of the council, we did this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves and...
Councilor Mason, Councilor Carter, Davey.
Dean Morrison, Director of Finance.
All right, good evening. Are we going to have a visual presentation on the screen?
Yes, if you want to.
Thank you. Can you make sure that the microphone is, like, pointed up at your mouth? Just because sometimes people at home can't hear very well. Thank you.
I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. I'm not covering everything that's in the report, but the overall substance is kind of covered.
Are we having an issue with the microphones? Hold on one second, please, before you begin.
All right, is that better?
Better, thank you. Your question.
My screen, does it work? Is there...
Is the screen turned on?
I'm trying.
I don't know where. There's a button somewhere.
It's on the lower right. On the lower right.
If you push it from under behind it, it's...
Doing so. Okay, it's fine. I can look on there.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. All right, so we're going to talk overview of the project, talk about the scope, the periods that were reviewed, the scope invitations, which were kind of mentioned, and some of the results and recommendations of what we did. So the scope had six major areas, charter and policy compliance, accounting procedures and internal controls, the review of expenditures, review of budget amounts and related expenditures, expenditure reclassifications from the budget to grants, and review of budgetary practices. So the periods were fiscal 2023 and fiscal 2024. All right, so the scope invitations, it said certain information was not available or was not provided. The recommendations are based upon the completeness of the information that was provided. You know, and a lot of that was based upon interviews. And then certain information, as was mentioned, was provided after the draft was complete, is not included in this report. Most of that related to purchasing, bidding. All right, so the recommendations, so a lot of the recommendations, they're provided at the best practice level. Sometimes things could be improved by not hitting best practice, but I always like to provide the best practice as what to aim at. So there's two types of recommendations, and they're not specifically identified. The ones internal control related, a lot of them are labeled, you see segregation of duties. Those are the ones that really should be addressed immediately. And then other ones are operational or efficiency related, and they can be addressed, you know, as, as time permits. All right, so the first section, review of the charter statutes and board policies. So state statutes require that Board of Ed's approve transfers between, we'll call it the object levels, so salaries, benefits, professional services, those type of things. There's nine major categories. And the board policy actually goes a little bit lower than that level. So management can't overspend the salary line or overspend the benefits line. They would have to go to the board and get approval. So we didn't see any transfers at all, really, for fiscal '23 or '24. And the details are on Exhibit 1 in the actual report that will show you some of the lines that were overspent. And the other thing is, was to review proper classification of leases or notes payable, Board of Ed's under... If I was turned just a little bit, all right. The agreements, lease or notes payable, Board of Ed's under state statute cannot issue debt. Everything should come directly to council, because it affects when you're bonding. That has to be counted in, how much debt is outstanding. So we didn't really get those agreements to review to know if they had met the definition of a notes payable. So review of accounting procedures and internal controls. So this was to test the purchasing, so it's on Exhibit 2. So the results indicated that for 2023 and '24 combined, any of the purchases we tested, we were not provided adequate documentation to demonstrate the purchase was properly bid. Two of those, we didn't get any, any documentation at all. And some of that, again, was provided after this draft was complete. So the evaluation, you know, in that case, is as adequate as, I was going to say I use auditors judgment in that, as I do 20 municipal audits in addition to doing these type of projects. So it would be the same as if I was doing an audit, if I evaluated that something was adequately bid.
Could you move your microphone just a little bit closer? I'm having a really hard time hearing you. Sorry, thank you.
All right, so recommendations related to that, retention of bid documentation, a central location, establishing a central purchasing function, because all the purchasing is decentralized. Implementation or use of the electric purchase order system, create some efficiencies. The first two were kind of internal control basis. Use of a bid waiver form to properly document or prove bid waivers. So sometimes there's a reason not to bid, like when the pipe breaks, that type of thing. But it still should be documented that the bid was waived. And then compliance with the board bid policy. So you mentioned before, but the number that's after, the recommendations after, that's a number of recommendations are actually in the report. So payroll, I had, there's 10 recommendations in there. Again, I don't talk about them all, but for perspective, the 10 means if you looked at the full report, you'd see 10 specific recommendations. So the first recommendation is access, payroll clerks access to employee rates, segregation of duties. That, that's a critical internal control. That, that is a very common, unfortunately, thing for the ease of access of doing things, but the really should be, that person should be limited to that. We'll see what, and that's normally an HR function, human resources function. And we'll see that recommendation under human resources. So proper approval before payroll is processed. Somebody should review and sign off before, before it's actually finalized. The production review or payroll change report, this is what we call a compensating control. So if there is some access that the payroll clerk needs, that somebody's reviewing the changes that were made. And most payroll systems have a report that will tell you exactly this was changed from X to X. Consolidation of the school lunch program payroll under the district tax ID number. So this is, seems like a very legacy thing. Almost 40 years ago, when I started doing this, cafeterias were kind of managed like they were separate entities. But, you know, that went, went away in the early 90s. So this just creates a lot of inefficiency to do things twice, the way I have to break it out, W2s and a lot of other things. So the recommendation that they just close that number and just do all the payroll under the Board of Ed number, which is really, I don't, I don't have another client that I remember since the 90s that, that has a separate tax ID number for payrolls. And there's multiple other efficiency-related comments in the report. So human resource recommendations. Again, human resources should be responsible for entering employee rates. Again, this is the segregation of duties, where the, the actual payroll clerk would not be able to change the rates. And efficiency recommendation, be responsible for the workers' compensation claim management and processing, which is just, that's the normal place that that is, unless you have a risk manager. But normally, it's in the, in the human resources office. Accounts payable recommendations, similar to payroll. The accounts payable clerk has access to be able to add new vendors, and that, that's a textbook internal control, that they should not have that access, that that avoids fictitious vendors being entered in the system, that type of thing. Restriction on accounts payable clerks to be able to avoid or reissue checks. Again, that, if there's something needs to be voided, there should be approvals for that type of thing, and not be able to do that without, without prior approval. Proper approval and use of purchase order process by the Building and Grounds Department was indicated that in most cases, they get the invoice and the purchase order at the same time, so the budgetary control is really not functioning for that specific department. And then multiple other related recommendations, more efficiency-based. So I'm kind of highlighting the internal control ones for the most part. Cash receipts, the school lunch program. Revenues are recorded based upon the amount deposited versus the register reports. So again, this is a critical control from the perspective, if you only record what already is deposited in the bank, then you don't know what should have been deposited in the bank. So the, the control is that you record what the register says, and then you would make sure that that's the same amount that, that got to the bank. So had a lot of experience with this in another district, where there was a half a million dollar loss, because this was the process of recording, and it came to light many years later. School rental, just formalized the record keeping for billings and collections for amounts paid in advance. You have a good, they have a good process, where you have to pay in advance to use the facilities. That, that's, I don't see that often, so that's a good process. But although it's not a lot of money, there wasn't really some good formal accounting around that. It was just a spreadsheet on somebody's computer. Financial reporting recommendations. Reports that go to the Board of Education should include the actual financial reports and the financial software. That's a policy I follow, and I, I'm on my Board of Ed, as well as my Board of Finance, and I make sure we get the actual reports. It's great to have a, some sort of summary to help people understand who don't look at those reports all the time. But I think it's important everyone has all the information, not, not something that was filtered down through Excel. And the financial reporting should include all funds that the district was responsible for, not, not just the general fund, the school lunch fund, non-lapsing fund, Department of Defense funds. Again, I, I believe that it doesn't have to be monthly, but it's important that the Board of Ed or any board see the other, other activity that they're actually responsible for. All right, journal entries. The results are reviewed, noted in the journal entries. We looked at the proper approvals, adequate supporting documentation, and the use of the district form was not, not consistent. So we recommend that consistent use of the journal entry form that'll document the approvals. A lot of approvals either didn't exist, or there might have been an email attached, which again, is just not a best practice. And the documentation for the purpose of the entry or why we're doing the entry should be attached. Again, that would go along with the approvals. Here's, here's why, and here's the support for why and why. Other observations, just a monthly and timely preparation of bank reconciliations, which is a significant internal control. You know, I count that as my number one internal control as far as making sure that everything at least is recorded somewhere. So without having bank reconciliations done timely, you're not, you're not sure that everything is recorded. So I think that a lot of times, they've been doing them more at year end and catching up. But that has to be monthly. And the need to develop written policies and procedures to train new employees. As everyone's aware, there's a lot of turnover there. And I know they were in the process of doing that. And again, I stopped at '24, but while I was there, they were, they were putting some effort into trying to document how things were done. So when they have to train new employees, they would have something to follow. All right, review of financial reports, records and reports. So health insurance. The budget for medical claim costs was under budget by $645,000 for 2023 and $373,000 for fiscal year '24. So we recommend that there be detailed information by employee should, should be the way you would develop your, your budgeted numbers versus just estimating a percentage increase or that type of thing. It should be by, by employee and by the type of insurance you expect. Of course, it's still just an estimate as the demographics change. But, but as far as development, that should be the, the support. The budget line should be labeled more contribution to medical and service fund. Again, that's just more of a best practice, which is very hard to follow, what, what, what lines were insured that were charged to the budget, and the lines, the amounts that were, were moved to the internal... What, what, what lines were insured that, that were charged to the budget and the lines, the amounts that were, were moved to the internal service fund. So this would just add some clarity to the records. And then and, and the funding process was a little bit confusing because it, it looks like they're charging back the actual expense, which is a different way to do it versus just funding, you know, what was budgeted. And maybe that's because it's a commingled fund, which then led to the, the other recommendation, which is a little bit town side. It, it might be helpful to track the town boards activities separate to be able to see the actual cost by each side. General fund payroll. You know, looking at, at the budget, if you look at exhibit five, you see about half the salary lines were overspent for both fiscal years 23 and 24. Total salaries were, were under budget, so that there wasn't a, a compliance issue there. Certain lines were significantly underspent or overspent for both fiscal years. So looking at that, the recommendation is, is, is to kind of use that information for the subsequent years budget and, and line that up a little bit better, just from a monitoring perspective. And then in a lot of cases and, and we mentioned in other sections, just using the prior year actual as a baseline. I mean, there's always reasons why you can't always do that, but certain lines are consistently in, in just the two years overspent or way underspent versus being adjusted closer to a prior year actual. Special education costs, just, just more for perspective. This is, this is volatile in every, every district that I, that I work with. But excess cost report for special ed costs decreased by 288,000 from fiscal year 23 to 24. There were positive budget variances noted for both years with 24's variance being significant, a million 30, 38,000. But again, those, those numbers are very difficult to, to estimate, so that's, that's actually really good news for that year. Again, several of the lines have significant variances that are very consistent over or under. To look at that from, again, from a monitoring standpoint to kind of use prior actual to level that out. Property cost analysis. Exhibit eight, you know, for both years, nine or, nine or 10 of the lines were overspent with the total budget being overspent. 68,000 for 23 and 144,000 for 24 respectively. The largest amount overspent for both years was in the repairs to grounds line. And then we just noted, and I think it's in another schedule also about where things are charged. It looks like certain property car, costs were charged to other purchase services budget line that looked like should have been charged to the building production budget line. Again, so just to get a, a truer picture of, of, of the, of the property cost. All the invoices should be charged, you know, to the correct line. And that again, could be a result of the turnover, but we did notice that in a couple of places. Recommendations to adjust subsequent budget amounts, again, based upon the prior year and known expected repairs. Again, the, the variances were pretty significant on, on some of them. And then costs related to buildings should be charged to the correct line. So you have a complete picture of what the, the property costs are and how to budget for future years. On the good news side, at least as of June 24, the cafeteria had a fund balance of 1.4 million, which is a, a very good number from perspective from my other clients. The program is paying for all employee benefits except for pension. Again, that, that's more on the unique side that over the years as cafeteria funds got tighter and tighter, the employee benefits were absorbed by the budget. In your case, you're, they're paying for them and you still have fund balance. So that, that program is doing very well. And then the tax ID number, we mentioned that on our previous slide. The other part with the school lunch is that, that again, they kind of function as if they're their own company. They really should follow the same policies and procedures and internal controls as all other district activities. Recommendations, checks should be mailed to vendors by the accounts payable or who processes and not returned to the school lunch program. Again, this is the segregation of duties. The program should follow the same policies and procedures as, including use, use of purchase orders. And again, the tax ID number, I guess I really wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Okay. Review of the budget and actual expenditures. As a result of, and this wasn't a complete review, but of performing other procedures. We noted about the 15,672,000 for 23 and, and 41,600 for 24 that appeared to be charged to an incorrect account. Again, we didn't do a complete review. This was a byproduct of looking at, at a lot of transactions in detail and not necessarily looking at the invoice. But just, just from a perspective of doing this for a while, without pulling the invoice, it did look, it looked, they were incorrect. So some of this could be just providing the department's detailed information of where things should be charged. This is what we would recommend to address that. Review of the transferred grants funds. So exhibit 10 has the details, but the, the various grant funds, monies were transferred 1.416 for 23 and then 950,000 for 24. The majority of the costs were related for technology costs, which is what the DOD grants are.
So could you just advance this slide?
Doing good for a while. All right. So the lost, largest cost being computer software at 475,000 and, and 573,000 for fiscal's 20, 23 and 24. So the recommendation is, is, is that the, the DOD grant funds be included as part of the, the budget process and, and more planned. I mean, they, they have helped a little bit when you've had tighter budgets, but it's just, if, if you need the technology, it should just be kind of part of the whole budget picture when you budget. Review of bu- budget development support. Again, for the years that we looked at, we, we really weren't provided much support to see like what, what was, what calculations and, and what type of information backed up the amounts that were budgeted. It was basically an Excel file with, with very limited calculations. But there was not any supporting documentation for the numbers used in the calculation. So we really couldn't get a, a, a good perspective on that. It's something that again, will be helpful going forward to have that all centralized and in one place as far as being able to budget consistently, especially when you've had turnover and nobody knows, doesn't have the detail of how, how certain things were developed. It does make it difficult in the, the following year. And a couple of times the, the support we had, and it could have been because there were budget changes. We couldn't map the, the budget support to the actual adopted budget. The most significant budget lines we couldn't agree were salaries for hourly employees, substitutes and, and health insurance. Recommendations, develop and implement formal policies and procedures for budget format, responsibilities required, supporting documentation and retention of support. Supporting documentation should be developed or retained for, for all budget lines and I use all loosely, all significant budget lines. And, and there should be specific policy and procedures to manage the salary line changes. And that's the highlights. Happy to answer questions.
So we'll open it up for questions. Director Green, do you have anything you would like to share before we open it up?
No, not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to questions and if we are going to go through the packet at all, let's, in our agenda packet. If you're going to talk about a specific one, please list the page number so we can all get on the same page with you. That'd be good. Or if you want to mention the presentation that was just presented to us, there are page numbers as well.
Point of information?
Your question.
Can you just keep the slide up then so people at home can follow?
Well, we, we don't know if we're going to use that or our packet. Which page?
If we referenced a page, it could be brought up at the same time. That's all I was asking.
Thank you, yes. Mr. Burke, could you like bring it up if need be? Okay. Do you have anybody who'd like to start us off? Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Santafanti, did I pronounce that right?
Santafanti.
It's a, it's a lot of work. Thank you for doing all of this work. Mostly I just have some observations as opposed to specific questions on, on areas. The main one that's mentioned throughout this report is that you were not able to get, or not, were not supplied with documents and information that you needed. So you noted that many times you couldn't get what you needed. That was reflect, we also had, I had the same problem. I just talked to myself. We had the same problem trying to get answers for questions. And so it just leads to frustration and lack of trust as it just keeps going on. So that, to me, I, I had the same observation that you had in your, in your document. I know we have a new, new business manager and we're hearing very, very good things about her. So in this, this is a different period of time, 23 and 24. Just reading through this, this is just my own observations. Things are kind of sloppy, haphazard and seems like the, the business office people were not clear on their responsibilities. This led to overlap, it led to combining tasks that shouldn't have come together, like in payroll and purchasing all, all kinds of, kinds of places. So that, you reflect, do you agree with that saying? Maybe not the sloppy, haphazard, but that's not an accounting term.
Yeah, it, it, there's definitely, and again, I know how things evolved. Again, I just have this window of perspective, but, but yeah, there are certain things and like payroll, they had two people and now they have one person. So I don't know if that's, you know, budget related or, 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 or design. But, but those, those type of things, internal control has to be a consideration. Like you said before, you're, you're combining things and, and then I'm just not sure there's a strategy for saving. Maybe something in the document that is the budget is, is, is available, but then not, not where did that information come from? So and, and then there's a couple of things we'll say like, you know, the special ed process and what they do for excess costs is, is, is very formalized and, and documented and, and that, that works very well. So it just has to be consistent in all areas to have that same kind of level of attention and detail and, and internal control and process.
Do you, I, and my third observation is we just, they just need better financial reporting, monthly reporting, reconciliations. They seem like to, and just from examples we've had during this last year, they just didn't always know where their money was. And sometimes it's up, sometimes, it was one week where it jumped like up and down a lot. And so it was very, very disarming. You've worked with a lot of boards, I'm sure business offices and, and education departments. Do you have a sense that they are staffed with the adequate number of people from your example, your history of looking at other business offices? Are they overstaffed, understaffed? Where do you, where would you place them?
I didn't really look at it from that perspective, but it, it seems like they were adequately staffed. And I think where, where, from a timing perspective, there's a lot of people that, that were leaving, somebody had been there for 20 years. So that changes, again, that person can do something that it might take more than one person to do in the learning curves. But it seemed like the number of people was adequate. Again, just, just a lot of it is just to structure it and so it's the most efficient way.
Stabilize their staff and keep them, then the, the amount of people were, were okay. It's just not, it's just people changing all the time and policies aren't quite adequate.
I think you have that because even when I, when I, you know, would talk to somebody, I wasn't talking to a business manager that sat there. So the perspective I get as far as what their role is and how they do things is, is not necessarily how it was in, in the window that I was reviewing.
Those are my, that's my basic observations from the, what the town manager has suggested. You know, do we continue or do we have an update on have they made changes? Just put my, I think having an update if they've made the changes. I don't know if we need to continue more. That's an observa- that's something that you and I think the business manager need to figure out. But for me, it's like, let's see if they've done something. So if they put the changes, implemented them, have separated tasks, have people doing the correct things. Knowing that that's going on would be comforting from our side and, and trusting their numbers. So that's sort of where I'm leaning on the two options that the town manager put out. So, okay.
Councilor McBride.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Joe, for putting this together. I, as you know, I always appreciate the work you do, so I appreciate the level of detail you provide. I don't really have any necessary questions for you. I'll have one at the end. But my major comment is, as you indicated, the internal control and segregation of duties are by far the most pressing issues. There's seven or eight things that I would, I would consider truly financial at risk for the town significantly. The operational efficiency and the financial reporting, I'm not as concerned with that's after the fact, but I, I'm very concerned about these matters. I know we had concerns and issues, but these are, in my opinion, significant, very significant risks that we need to address immediately. And I'm not sure how we do that, if it's Joe's helping us out or Town Manager Burke. But these are, these are major issues that we need to resolve quickly as possible. I'm not sure if they're doing it now, maybe they have already made them, but I think we need to do whatever we can do to put this forward and make sure they're taking care of those seven or eight internal control weaknesses. Because there, there's, there's prone, there's potential risk for concerns there. So I just want to, my, my point is we need to address that as soon as we can and follow up on the reporting and the operational efficiency that, that we can do later. But those issues I think we need to address up in full support of whatever we need to do, either hire Joe or, or some other way we can do that. But that's where I stand. I think we need to address those as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Boarder.
So my first question is, when's the last time they've had one of these audits?
I, I only have done this one, so I, I don't have that information.
Do we know from a town point? Town manager, finance director?
I don't believe there's been an operational review.
So that's, that's perfect. Yeah, that's my first thing. I think before we throw insult to injury, my words, we have to remember that this has never been done. Is that normal? Has anyone asked ever before? Myself, who served on the RTM many years ago, I hated the object codes within the budget line items. I was considered not popular at the time when I was asking questions. I was actually shut down and told, "Council Boarder, you're out of line. You're, you're second guessing the, the board of ed staff." So we can compare this, but to me, if you've never had one, we've had a couple of superintendents over the couple of years, you know, this, this stems back. So again, when you look at where you're at, you have to look where you came from. So when I do my budgeting and my taxes, I'm comparing year to year. If they've never had one, we have financial people that report every year, they don't pick up on this. So that's, is there a reason they don't pick up on these things? That's my next question.
Some of this is operational and not why. It's, it depends on what, it's a different focus. But internal control is pretty standard. You don't need one of these to have good internal control.
I can agree, but everyone needs to check some balances. We're talking about balances. So if you've never had one of these done, you have nothing to compare it to. So I'm actually shocked that there's not more, to be honest. That's where I was going to go. When I read this, I looked everywhere in the town budget. I couldn't find any time from the time I graduated high school in 98 to my kids being in the school system and beyond, back to Dr. Mitchell and many other wonderful superintendents back in the 90s. It was okay to have this code and I don't think anyone ever looked into it. It was never highlighted. No one ever addressed it. I mean, some people, definitely the council never addressed it. And it hasn't been something that anyone's really known, it feels, that it was a concern. So that's my first thing. So before I throw the bag at the people that were doing this, I want to take a step back and look at processes and say, we're only as good as our checks and balances. So with that, I don't think it's as bad as I thought. Do I think there's things in here that need immediate attention? Absolutely. But with the amount of changeover that's been happening, you can see where these things can come. But I do think there needs to be a handle. My next question is, when did the board of ed get their eyes on this?
Same time as the council, as it was in the packet.
Right. So I guess some people ask, has there been any change yet? Again, I know there was a group that formed on the board of education, but they've kind of been waiting for the audit. They weren't brought to the table on this, so we're doing our own individual audit. That's wonderful. But they only got this on Thursday. So I mean, you know, so I don't know how fast that will take, but I'm sure they need a little bit of time. But again, I'm not downplaying the urgency for reform. I'm excited to see there's a process. Again, I ask for Again, I asked for reconstruction of the budget book many years ago, asked for more detail on line items. I was told that's overstretching, overbearing. I mean, this is eight years ago plus and under a former superintendent. So with that, I couldn't find any other audits. Thank you for your time. I think you did a wonderful job, but I think it's, it's, these should be done, these should be required every 10 years, in my opinion.
Your time is expired.
You know, for taxpayer purposes. Why they're not?
Counselor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going by the report now, page 19, with your recommendations.
Is that in our packet or in?
Yes, page 19 in the packet. The COS-1 recommendation and...
Point of information? Can you put it on the screen, please?
It's in our packet.
It's in the packet, page 19 in your packet?
It's not a screen presentation, referring to?
No.
No.
Can you put it up for other people to follow?
Can I continue?
You may continue.
Is the recommendation, and this is what struck me the most, we recommend that the Groton Public School immediately begin complying with state statutes and the board's policy regarding budget transfers. So that's an urgent need coming out of this report. And it's, again, in the wrap-up. Besides that, I see a lot of internal policy and procedure meetings that could happen within the board. I just don't know how, my concern is, how do we follow up to know that state statutes and board's policies are being followed? That's where I want, the continuance I want to see is that. I know just from paying attention to the Board of Ed that they're very in-depth, very concerned with the budget process. You have a newer board now who's just gone through, you know, my word, a little bit of turmoil with the changes in the financial department. And it seems like we have a more even keel now, even now after the report has, the draft has been done, you have been getting more information than you couldn't receive earlier. It's not included in the report. I'm not sure what it is. But it sounds like the Board of Ed can really take care of a lot of this stuff internally themselves with the committees they have set up now. But I'm really concerned about making sure we're following state statute and the policies, the Board of Ed policies there. And that's the communication I want back to continue on, to know that that's happened as soon as possible. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm actually on page 18. And I'm going to stop and let everybody get there. So piggybacking on Counselor Good, the things that kind of hit me the most were based on results of the budget versus actual analysis we prepared in Exhibit 1. The Board of Education is not in compliance with state statute 10-222 for budget transfers. Down one more, we noted four of six objects were over expended. Over expenditure of budget objects is not allowed under state statute and also violates the Board of Education Policy Number 3160 on budget transfers. And we note that four of eight objects were over expended, over expended, sorry, over expenditure of budget objects are not allowed under state statutes and also violates the Board of Education Policy Number 3160 on budget transfers. So those are kind of my big highlights out of this that I'm hoping can be addressed. This was just brought up. So we have to give them obviously some time to fix this, but hopefully that is something that can happen quickly. Sorry. And then, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find my pages. On page 41. So on page 41, something that we've been talking about was how challenging the budget is to read and follow. And I feel like sometimes we're comparing apples to oranges and we're not really sure what goes with what. So, I'm sorry, it's page 59 of the, of our packet, page 41 of the document. But the requirement to review a minimum of three years of prior year actual expenditures amounts and require justification for budgeting less than a three-year average. So really kind of just that, like getting to see more of what's going on and understanding the budget. I feel like the budget is often difficult to follow. And then there was a recommendation for the town that I just want to make sure I asked about. On page 28. I'm sorry, page 43 of the budget book of the entire agenda, page 28 of the review. I'm going to move seats so that Counselor Jones. I'll finish my thoughts, sorry. At the end of the line, it says, we recommend that the town set up a separate revenue line in the medical insurance fund for contributions from the Groton Public School budget, school lunch funds, grants funds, et cetera, to allow detailed analysis of the monitoring. Is that something that the town is ready to step in to do?
We could set up our separate revenue line. The revenues when they come in from the board are coded in the comment section of the GL details. So when the monthly bank reconciliations are prepared and we have our spreadsheets, we have the town board, the total. So the pieces are being maintained separately, but we could, if that was the option everybody wanted, we could create another revenue line and have just the revenue posted from the board to that separately.
Okay, thank you. And then again, to agree with Counselor McBride, the segregation of duties is going to be, is probably the most important thing here on top of just getting in compliance with the state. So thank you so much for all of this work. It was good to read through. It's a lot of information and I appreciate all your work. Thank you. All right, I'm going to take a quick turn here, probably my full three minutes. So it has been painful to watch the Board of Ed meetings when they discuss their finances. I see the frustration in our Board of Ed members that they're not understanding what's happening either. They're using spreadsheets, they're not using documents that are coming out of the financial software. And the numbers keep changing, big swings from 1.6 in the negative all the way over to, hey, we got an extra $700,000 at the end of the year. I mean, this is what we're seeing and it's really hard to watch these and not understand. And there's no explanation of actually what's happening. I see that this was started by this council back in like September 10th of 2024. And here we are, more than a year later. Why do you think it took this long? Because I thought we were going to get something probably by the summer, somewhere in the summertime. What do you think?
Yes, some, a lot of it's just information flow as far as the timing of getting some of the information.
And if we did continue to do this, do you think the information that you've gathered so far from the administration, the school administration, would, do you think that would change the picture of anything that we see in this report?
I wouldn't, I don't think substantially, but again, you had a different person managing 2025, so it's hard, hard to answer that. So without, if you had the same person there, then I wouldn't expect a lot to be different. But since you had somebody else who was managing day-to-day, different person who did the budget, I didn't look at that because the scope was 24, so.
You're saying for 25?
For 25.
But this is for 23 and 24.
Right.
So potentially, we could use the remaining money to look into 25 to see if things are better. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I just don't, you said it wouldn't be any different. I just can't, because it's a different person, it's hard.
But 23 and 24 didn't change, right?
No.
With the information that you received?
Oh, you meant if I looked, if I looked at those same years.
With the additional information you've received?
Yeah, additional information is not significant at this point. So it's, I think, most of it's related to just the bidding. So out of those eight that I didn't get information on, I think I got a couple more things. And then I think I got the leases and the debt agreements. So I only got, you know, four or five more documents. So I'm not sure. I mean, the best way, if I had to give you my opinion on it, was wait, see what this new person can do and do something next spring when they've had time to read this and to see it, because you're not, this is kind of history at this point. I don't know what changes she may have made or had time to make and will make, but if she uses this as a roadmap to address this, so I would say looking at it when she had some time would be valuable where she, we can say, okay, these 10 things are corrected and this is done differently. So since, because you've had that turnover there, I think that would be the most valuable way, if you were going to spend any more money, is to push it out and see what she can address by whatever date you're comfortable with.
I would agree with that. I think we could also give the Board of Ed, me personally, give the Board of Ed Committee time to try and implement this and hold the administration accountable for some of these, the implementation of some of this. So I had earmarked some of these on here. And honestly, I think I, from the, in our packet, the report in the packet, I have just about every single page earmarked on things I wanted to discuss here tonight. I will say, the item, because, I mean, honestly, when I read this, a lot of this is basic accounting 101. This is not advanced accounting, some of this, this is just best practice. This is stuff that anybody who'd sat through one class of any kind of accounting at all would probably learn some of the basic stuff in here on how to do some of these things. So I'm very surprised our town, school administration has not had these things in play. And I can't imagine how many years this has been going back now. That sort of scares me, that all these budgets and all the budgets that we've looked at and how hard it has been to review them and ask the questions and the questions, the answers, you're just, you're basing decisions on somebody answering a question, not that you can see it in the numbers, but on somebody answering questions sometimes. And it's just so hard. One of the big things that I have is that they balanced, they reconcile their checkbook once a year. So if somebody, there was fraud in September, they didn't find it until June of the next year potentially. That is huge. How can you reconcile your books once a year? I mean, does that make any sense to you? I mean, I work in accounting, doesn't to me.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you. Again, I just want to reiterate, this is a wonderful document, lots of detail. It's going to take them a lot of time to digest and move things forward. I'm wondering if this council or the town manager wants to consider maybe having you do a priority list of some sort? Because I think, I'm going to go through those seven or eight items again that I think are the priorities, and I'd like to hear from you, Joe, if what I'm indicating is missing from like a top 10 list, because I think these items need to be addressed as soon as we can. The improper budget transfers, that puts, opposes the risk to the town of going over budget overall, number one. Not properly bidding, number two. The payroll clerk having access to separating, changing pay rates, number three. No approval process of payroll, four. The AP clerk adding new vendors, five. The lunch only recording actual cash deposits versus the registers. And the last one, as Counselor Mayor Franco mentioned, the bank recs not being done timely. So I would, I think it would behoove this council to consider coming up with a priority listing to move forward and have them at least address those segregation of duties and internal controls. And then, as everyone desires, the budgetary matters later. But in your professional opinion, would there be other things that you think would be on the top 10 or even top 12 list that this council could consider developing like a higher priority?
I think those are major ones. I'd have to look. Anything I put segregation of duties in the recommendation, so I'm not sure, you listed all the major ones for sure, but I don't know if there's more to others. But those would be the ones that are definitely priority. And the bank recs for me are number one, just after doing this and the number of different investigations I've done, that's like the number one control.
Okay, thank you. And it's possible some of this has already been completed, you know, maybe they're in process of doing it. So hopefully that's the case, but I think if it's not, it's something we should prioritize. So thank you.
Point of information?
I'm sorry, your question?
Can Counselor McBride please go through his list somewhere so we can write them?
Oh, you'd like to write down?
I apologize. Sometimes I talk too quick. Improper budget transfers, not properly bidding, payroll clerk accessing pay rates, no approval process of payroll, the AP clerk adding new vendors, lunch only recording the actual cash deposits versus the register reports, and the bank reconciliation is not being done on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I would add, one, the journal entry approval as another critical control, journal entry approval. Just to formalize, it should be the same form, should be approved, there should be support to those.
Counselor Merritt.
Just curious, as we go on about these and Counselor McBride's recommendations, are we creating a format for the Board of Ed or are we going to allow them to do their own?
I think we can have a discussion about that at another time.
Okay.
Counselor Portlin.
Thank you. I also would add to the priorities, the tax ID issue as well, since that's, you said is outdated since the 90s.
Yeah, that's more of an efficiency issue, so it's not as much internal control, but that's something pretty easy to do. General one's around the corner, so.
I mean, that's way out of date. I think that needs to be brought to current time. So I definitely would think that would be something we'd want to do with the one's current, that would be my thought. Is it normal, and again, for town to only have had one of these in their existence that we know of?
Yes. These are not done regularly because, one, they're expensive. So I've probably done in the last five or six years, only five or six of them.
Yeah. Right. I guess, you know, I don't know. I guess for me, I mean, usually when you come into a new place, there's a somewhat semi-audit done when you have a new person taking the helm, especially in the finance sector. You know, good rule of thumb, sometimes businesses, you know, it's good to change up your attorney and your financial people just to kind of have a fresh set of eyes, new hands. So with the high turnover, it would just seem to me that this should have probably been propelled many years ago. And so it's kind of, to me, shocking that it's so late. But with that, you know, the Board of Ed staff are only as good as what they get from the administration when the questions are asked. They've been very vague. RTM asks, council asks. So it'll be interesting to see how these are moving forward and implemented. Since they just got them Thursday, I do like the plan of giving some time. It doesn't make sense to throw a whole bunch more money at this right now. Let's take the food we got here and disperse it and, you know, put them to work and, you know, get some correction. And also to give a fair shot to the new administrator that came in to kind of make some correction. This is a chance for her to shine, really. I mean, she's basically being handed a, you know, I think, I'd feel more comfortable actually having an audit if I was coming in. That's just me. I think audits should be done anytime after someone's been in financial authority greater than 10 years. I just am surprised it's not part of a policy, maybe. Is that even possible to have it as a policy?
Yeah, as far as policy, you could set whatever, whatever you want. It's just...
I'd like to intervene on that question. We have audits done every year. The town has an audit done on the Board of Education every year. This is an operational review, which is, it's a little bit different than an audit. So I just wanted to tell you, it is done every year.
No, I, thank you for speaking for me. I'm aware of that.
I didn't speak for you, I answered your question.
I was looking for an answer. I basically understand the difference, but I think an operational review should be done roughly every 10 to 15 years for just good bookkeeping and house, because the other review that we're having done doesn't pick up on these other efficiency, it's more surface level, not in-depth. So my thought would be, if the Board of Ed possibly can, I know they're expensive, but if there's a change of helm within a 10 to 15 span, I think an audit like... but if there's a change of helm within a 10 to 15 span, I think an audit like this, high level, should be done, and that would be me. But I'll leave it at that. I guess for me, I look forward to seeing what the Board of Education can do. I'm happy that there's some new people on there that are asking the tough questions. I'm excited to see what changes will be made. And I think, you know, for me, I can support what Counselor McBride put forward, adding also the other thing with the tax ID. But I, you know, give them some time to act on these items and let's see where it takes us and then recheck back in at a later date. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to go back to something that Counselor Russ brought up on page 18, which was the four of eight objects over expended in 2023, 2024. And then I'm going to the, to exhibit section in the back where all the spreadsheets are. And I am not an accountant and didn't take accounting 101. But I do know that red is bad on a spreadsheet, and there is red all over these pages. And some of it is quite significant, like 1.7 million, 1.1 million, some in the hundreds, thousands. So is what you, what was brought out on page 18 or wherever it was, is that this? Is that the same? Does that, does that mean what's in the details in the back? The over expenditures of object codes?
Right.
Is that the same stuff?
It's a page.
So I'm looking at.
Page five.
Exhibit eight, exhibit seven. I'm looking at exhibit five.
Spent all the months.
Yeah, it's red everywhere. So my, my basic wish is, are those two things related? And then the second question is, has any of this been fixed or are these numbers still in the negative?
Well, this is history, so it doesn't make, certainly the board could go and approve these retroactively. I'm not sure there's any value to that. But, but because these are old fiscal years, it's just really, again, a statute, a compliance thing and, and management tool. So it's more, the issue is more what they doing for fiscal '25 is really.
So does this tell me in '23 and '24 they had losses, they carried these losses over? Have the losses been reconciled?
Well, in total, the total budget wasn't overspent, just various areas. And certain areas by statute, you can't without board approval. So, I mean, but budget, budget changes are allowed. They just, management has to get approval, just like we've come to council for that. So that's more what the comment is about, is that the, there wasn't any approval of overspending. But the total budget was not overspent, which is.
So somewhere there was a big plus.
There was pluses that offset that.
Can you, can you explain a little bit what, you said they weren't complying with state statute. Can you, can you explain what that, what state statute is and how they weren't complying with it? What were the things they weren't complying with?
The statute says that management cannot overspend the object levels, the major categories, salaries and benefits. Should be a schedule that lists that specific thing. So the statute's saying, without board approval, management cannot overspend those lines. So when we go look at the general ledger and see they're overspent, there's no transfers approved, then that's technically a violation of state statute.
And there was no board, there was no Board of Ed approval to do that.
There's no Board of Ed approval.
They did something that they didn't get approval for.
Right. Because it's trying to maintain some integrity. Obviously, town side is much more tightly controlled. But the statute was put in many years ago because Board of Ed was one number. This was, we'll say, the compromise that they had to at least manage to eight lines or eight departments. So I'm not, it happens at a lot of places that there's not approval. It's obviously worse when you overspend the total budget, but.
So on certain line items, they're not, if I understand right, on certain line items, they're not allowed to overspend. In this particular case, they did overspend without Board of Ed approval. There's a lot of red in here, but by the end of the year, somehow it was all reconciled, that everything came out even. But sort of in the middle of the year, things are kind of funky. Is that?
Right.
Am I interpreting that correct?
Yeah, it's exhibit one that shows you really the, so it's 42 and 43 actual page numbers. But exhibit one is showing you really the compliance with the statutes.
So salaries, benefits, services, these are things that are statute dependent.
Right, so these are the, I keep talking about the objects, the budget category or objects. The object code is listed, so those are the major categories they can't expand. And then the board policy actually goes lower than that. So I just measured them against statutes. But their policy has more categories that they're supposed to get approval for than this.
Mr. Britt, would you put exhibit one up on the board?
What page was it?
It's exhibit one. It's after.
Page 61.
62.
63, 62.
62 and 63? They're not numbered, but you have to get to at least 61 in the next couple of pages.
Two pages not numbered.
42 and 43.
Yeah.
On the actual.
There. That's it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the two pages.
So the four red categories are the four I referenced in the recommendation that were overspent. The four objects.
So like services, professional, technical, they overspent by $420,000.
Right.
Without approval.
Right, right. They underspent salaries and benefits. So again, you look at the total down below, they're positive by $2,000. But the statute is, again, trying to just create some board level control over spending that you just can't decide, I'm just going to hire all these people without having the money to do it, without going to the board saying, I need to take money out of benefits and move it to salaries because we need more payers, which is everybody's problem right now. Which, that's probably what's in professional services, because everybody's outsourcing those.
So by the end of the year, they made good. But in terms of internal controls, which is all the things you highlighted in this document, the lack of internal controls caused, maybe caused things to kind of go in odd directions that they shouldn't have. And they did it without getting sort of approval from the authorities they should have gotten from.
Right, it doesn't say they spent money incorrectly, it's just they didn't get approval to spend it in these buckets, so.
And just making it up at the end of the year isn't good enough. You need to have approvals all the way along.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Britt, would you turn to the second exhibit as well, so you could see the next year? And in that statute, let me, I have a point of information. In that statute also, the council is supposed to be notified of such overspending in transfers. Is that correct?
I mean, there's, yeah, there's a lot of communication that Board of Eds are supposed to do to boards, but I'll just tell you, that doesn't happen that often. So I'm not sure if you're chartered, the statute doesn't say they have to communicate that specific thing. It has to go to the Board of Ed. But there's, there is reporting to Board of Eds, to councils, that I'll say almost no Board of Eds do on a regular basis, just because I'm on my town side and my board side, and there's no reports that come from town to board. But that's just the reporting requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Just, I'm sorry, just one more. Just questioning about.
Counselor Good.
I'm sorry. About the, the reporting to the Board of Ed. Is it, is it possible, just, just after watching, you know, most of the meetings over the last couple of years, is it possible that it was reported to the Board of Ed and it was a little more informally accepted? It just wasn't documented properly to be accepted? You know, the financial director now, great financial director, comes in and says, this is where we're at, this is what we're going to spend. And it's an accepted report, but it's not officially voted on. Could that be the out of compliance? Is, it wasn't documented properly that they went to the Board of Ed?
Mayor? We looked into that at the time. No, there was some documentation that went to the Board of Ed.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add? Your time?
No, I'm off set, thank you.
All right, so I have some more. So when I was looking in here, you had requested reports in the minutes when the emergency purchases were reported to the board, but the information was not provided. So if there's an emergency purchase, it's supposed to go to the board? Is that what you're saying?
If it's not bid, so it's an emergency, the board needs to be notified. So the purchase can happen, it is an emergency, but then the board needs to be notified that it, that it was done.
But they never gave you the minutes?
Right. I couldn't find it in the minutes. I asked for the minutes, there were, again, some of the documentation might, wasn't clear that I would be comfortable saying it was provided.
Okay. Also, it says payroll is not reviewed or approved before it is processed. So my question is, is it, and you're reviewing it, was it reviewed after processing and approved? Did anybody review it at all after? Or did they just find errors and then correct them?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if, it didn't seem like, again, I was talking to the person that should have been reviewing in '23 and '24, wasn't there to ask what they did? But the current process and when I, when I would walk through the processes, person did the payroll and then balanced it and then it processed. It wasn't, usually it's in a format that someone would look at it and review it and then say, okay, go ahead, do that. You know, there's usually some analytics that are done, but just to look at it and see, does it make sense? So that, that wasn't in place.
I've heard at the Board of Ed meetings, it seems as though a lot of times they can't give answers because it's a payroll week and it seems like everybody in the whole finance department helps with payroll. But then in your report, it says only one employee is responsible for processing payroll.
I think that until recently, there was two people and one person retired and then now one person is doing payroll. So again, that does create some of the potential workflow issues and segregation. So, so I think the one person was a subsequent to the period I'm reviewing, but it was relevant to the recommendations.
It says purchase orders for maintenance and building grounds related costs are generally entered once the invoice is received. So they put the purchase order and the invoice in after they've already made the purchase. What is the point of even doing a purchase order then?
There isn't any purpose at that point. The purchase order is to control the budget and that type of thing, so the.
Purchase orders say, hey, I want to buy this. And once it comes in, you, you acknowledge that you received it and the prices match and that you agreed upon. I don't understand why they put it in after the fact.
I don't know, if it's just because the AP says you have to have a purchase order to pay the invoice, but it, it doesn't add any value if there was no prior approval. There is, and to do it after the fact and then just pay it, it's just wasted time.
All right, I, I also, there's so many things. The total amount of encumbrances reported in the audit report were 104,000 and the other one was 15,000 for fiscal year '23 and '24 respectively. These amounts did not agree to the amounts reported in the general ledger report we reviewed. What does that mean?
Point of information, what page are you on, please?
I'm sorry, page 36 of our agenda packet.
Thank you.
It just means the general ledger didn't really support what, what the audit. So if something changed or something was, was done, I couldn't understand what was different or what the encumbrances were for or how that was done. Just your books and records should, in a perfect world, agree to the audit.
I already talked about bank reconciliation. I also have the business manager's administrative assistant performs the following functions, and it lists nine functions. And I just broke it out to basically what department they belong to. And then one is purchasing, one is receivables, one would be HR, one would be administrative, one would be purchasing, another section purchasing, and then another would be payroll. So to have an administrative assistant doing all these types of things, I don't understand. What, is she an administrative assistant? Like, I don't exactly understand that role and how she is capable of doing all these functions.
This was a long time employee, so all those functions evolved over many, many years. I'm not sure why that was their title, because they weren't really doing almost anything that was an assistant type person to the business manager. So this was an observation, because somehow nobody's going to, and this person, my understanding, was retiring, so it was kind of critical, like what's going to happen to all this, all these functions, because they're not even in the right area.
Right, that's a lot of departments for one person to be having their hands in all those type of things. I, I, I see it in a mom and pa, a very small business, but not in a municipality with that type of budget. That's, it was sort of shocking to me. Group insurance. In the insurance part, you basically were saying you were not able to evaluate whether they contributed the full amount budgeted for each of the years as the budget lines include other costs. So you're not sure if they actually funded those accounts properly or fully. This is on page 43 of our packet. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was hard, hard to follow. And part of it is some of the accounting where they, they move the money to the Internal Service Fund and then move it back on paper and then book, record claims, which is not a normal process. And, and part of that goes to the comment about, on the town side, to break it out, because I just couldn't follow, because sometimes small amounts came from grants, came from cafeteria. So, so again, there's nothing that requires it from an accounting standpoint, but I just couldn't follow from their ledger to the Internal Service Fund because of the way the information came from the board to the town.
You also had mentioned in your packet, oh my goodness, something to the, oh, I have so many more questions. My time. Counselor Borderline, you don't have the floor. Counselor Merritt.
Yes, I want to go back a few, about five years when we authorized the repair of a certain roof. And I was told at that time and ensuing from that time to now that per state rules, they had five years to use that money. That money sits there for five years. We gave it, we should have some direction when it's used. And regarding the work to be done over a period of five years, there could be more money involved. I, I'd like to see that the money is spent when it's authorized.
Okay, that's not, I guess it's not something I looked at, because it was just these two windows. So I'm not sure where, even, I'm not sure where that money is.
Well, I'm more concerned with who authorized the time of five years. That doesn't make sense. Over five years, that particular money could go up. And then they get halfway through the job, oh, we need more. I'm not of the opinion to give more, because they were repeatedly told, when are you going to use it? Well, five years, the state said. That doesn't make sense to me.
Mayor? Yes?
I know that's off topic, I don't want to interrupt you to mention anything on that.
If you want to give a very quick response.
I just got to mention, the schools actually received a state award for that project. If you recall, they had pushed that project, it's the Charles Barnum Roof. They pushed it to next summer, because they have to go through the process to the state to get those funds. Internally, we have a policy that you have to spend, I believe, D, it's five years for capital projects without permission to extend that. And it hasn't been five years yet for our funding. So they're in compliance with our rules and the state rules as of now.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is there an extra copy?
Oh, is there an extra copy of the? Thank you. Sorry, and I missed part of this, because I was at another meeting, so I will take a turn. Okay. Sir Parker. Thank you for doing this. I know it was.
bit difficult to try to get all the information you needed. And I missed the part about the grants and DoD grant. Could you go over that for me? I know everybody else heard it, but if you don't mind.
I believe that might be on like 56, 57 of the agenda packet as well. Are you specifically asking about the transfer of the general fund money to the grants?
Correct.
Right. So I think on exhibit 10, there's multiple funds. DoD is the biggest that transfers some of its grants. Your regular education grants versus the DoD. So the majority of the costs that were transferred for DoD-related were for technology costs, which is what the purpose of those funds are. The largest cost were computer software for $475,023 and $573,024. So the recommendation related to that is just to kind of include that in the budget process as far as if that's the plan and that's what it's for, then maybe that is not in the budget, but you're going to use the grant. So just look at it together when budgeting is the recommendation.
Can I... Madam Mayor, may I ask Mr. Burt a question? Or... Okay. So is this the money that we have to wait for it to come in? And then we assist them with the temporary money until the DoD comes in?
This is the money that they're not sure over the last past couple of budget cycles if they are in fact going to get it based on the number of their student population.
That's the...
In the past, I think, because the population was higher for the military students, it was more readily known that they would be getting this funding, but it's been more questionable more recently.
So that is the paperwork that they have to submit by October 1st? Is that correct?
I believe so.
So is our transfer from our general fund to their general fund? Is that what we're doing?
In regards to what this is in relation to?
Yes.
This was in relation to because they were going to be over budget for their general fund line and they opted to use their DoD grant money to cover those expenses.
And did that need board approval? Or should have had board approval before doing that?
Again, that's a little bit of complicated question. I mean, in some ways, we go back to the budget line, so those lines might have been overspent already. So for technology, so I'm not sure how the grant agreement... Again, that's why I recommend it's part of the budget process. It's a little more complicated if you're not sure if you're going to get it, but then that way the board is in the process. And when you're looking at your technology spending plan, that in a perfect world, this would be in there. Because a lot of this, and this happens a lot, everything gets charged to the budget and then moved later, which as long as it's allowable, that's fine. It makes it very difficult to audit at all times, but it's, you know, best practice is if you need computer software, that you would just buy it directly out of the grant versus transfer it later.
So my last question will be... So it looks like both '23 and '24 came in with a little bit left over. I believe that's now transferred over to a non-lapsing fund for them? Is that correct?
'24.
'24, not '23?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so '23 came back into the general fund.
If there was any remaining budget left from their '23 budget line, it did roll into the fund balance for general fund.
Okay. Part... Another part is then the requests we received, they were not technically... Because we've... Last summer, we received a request that they were short. So when, once they closed everything out, they were technically not short. And am I wrong in saying that?
Are you saying for their fiscal '25 budget?
Fiscal '24, is that right?
Each time, and then '24, when they did use those other DoD funds to shore up the budget, which I believe was approved by the Board of Ed at the end of the year. There was some... There was an issue with the budget for '24 and some money had to be moved to shore.
But I think that was part of fiscal '23 as well. If you recall, fiscal '23's audit was on extension for a number of months past due date, so I think a larger transfer from the DoD did occur during that time.
Again, I want to thank you for doing the operational review. Thank you for your assistance on everything. And I know, and I don't know Rita's last name, but thank her for doing the best she could, because she just started. So hopefully you'll get the rest of the information if we continue this. So again, thank you for all your hard work.
All right. I think we're all questioned out at this moment. We're maxed out, almost all of us on our time. So the school is... School budget is the largest part of our budget. So my question now is, how to go forward? What is... What are our abilities at this time when it comes to the Board of Ed and the school implementing best financial practices?
Say that.
Anybody wanting to answer? Any, all of you, any of you? What is, per charter, per everything, per however, all of this works, what is our role as a town council for trying to get best practices, policies, procedures implemented at the Board of Ed? And what is our role in that?
We do not set Board of Ed policy. We can ask them questions, make recommendations. And I know some of these things have been getting worked on by the Board of Ed and with Rita. Rita's doing a great job, so I think the first step is just simply, you know, worry out on these things, especially the critical ones listed. We could provide that list and specifically request feedback on that.
Do we have room on our next cow to have a... An agenda item where the council can potentially come up with the questions that we would like to ask the Board of Ed regarding these items?
Certainly.
So I would suggest to... If our council does agree, and we could take a consensus, that we would all, over the next couple of weeks, try and come up with some questions to ask the Board of Ed so that they can respond to us. Do you think this is a good practice to see where they are in... When they get their copy of this, they can respond to say where they maybe are in the process compared to your findings. Maybe they could just say, "We haven't touched this, but we plan to work on it. We might work on this next year. We don't have the time right now. Just give us an update on all the recommendations you gave and maybe where they are." Or what is your experience on this? Excuse me, why? Would you like to give your experience on this?
It's kind of varied. When I did this in another district, the Board of Ed went recommendation by recommendation and provided... Again, it was a whole new team, new superintendent, new business manager. So they gave for several months, and I think it's still on their website, you know, the status of addressing the recommendations. So I think requesting that, I think, makes sense. I think because you have a new person, I would guess a lot of these probably were addressed. I mean, I'm sure not all of them, but hopefully some procedures were put in based upon the best practices, such as bank recs and that type of thing. So a lot of it probably... So the status report makes sense. Still need more time, but asking for like, "Where are we today?" Would make everyone feel a lot more comfortable if half of the significant ones were addressed. Some of the changing access for AP and payroll, that takes a little bit longer logistically, but bank recs and journal entries and with a new person in, there's a high probability that they put some of those controls in already. And then, you know, after budget season, probably what everyone can address more, whatever the time is, to kind of ask again.
And this would give the Board of Ed an opportunity to have this discussion with their administration to find all these answers out and to have a feel for them as to where they stand in all of this. So I think that's a good idea.
Right. And if they have any questions, I mean, I certainly could, you know, help them or point them in the right direction if they're not understanding the details of the recommendation.
All right. And I will just say for myself, we can go down the row. Everybody could put out their thoughts on what they think. I personally am good with establishing that rapport with the Board of Ed, sending maybe the whole packet to them and saying, "Could you respond and let us know where you are on this? Whether you've been able to do anything or in the works or you've already implemented." And see what their response is. And probably will be the next council, but also maybe come back to this in the spring once again to review it again. And if necessary, potentially utilize the remaining of the funds in here to continue and, you know, and document where you think they might be at this time with maybe some of the very high-level stuff of seriousness. So that would be my recommendation. So let's go around. Councilor Rusk, what do you... Where do you stand on this matter?
I'm good with sending this to the Board of Ed. I think they need time to actually review it before we can make too many requests of them.
Potentially ask for their response, maybe?
Yeah, give them some time and get a response.
All right, thank you. Councilor Good?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm also good with just sending this forward to the Board of Ed. And I think their response could come in through regular emails to the town manager and he could include them in his report on how they're doing. I don't think they need to be here and responding to very many questions from us. I think they'll... They have all the recommendations in front of them when they have this report.
You would like a response in writing?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
To the town manager, though.
Councilor McBride?
Yeah, no, I'm comfortable providing this to the Board of Ed. I would like to have listed a priority listing of 10 or 12, because I think some are more important than the others, but if that's the will of the council, I'm fine with that. Thanks.
So you want to tell them what you think your priorities are?
Well, I think...
Or do you want to... I mean, because he listed them all in here. I'm just trying to clarify. He has them all listed. Do you want to just see where they are on them?
Well, I think I would defer to the professional. My understanding was he thought... I think you stated, Joe, that internal controls and segregation duties were more important than the operating efficiency in the financial report. So if that's the case, I would at least maybe in the email you send to them, just say that that's the case. If that's the case, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, that certainly, if they're going to invest any effort for things that aren't done, would be to focus on that. But if I use like the payroll thing, well, that changes the process, but there are compensating controls that they could do in the meantime before they do that. So it depends. But those are the critical ones to put in or put in the compensating control, something that someone's going to review that payroll change report, that someone spends more time looking at any new vendors that are added, so versus changing the system. Because I think they need a purchasing function, because it's so decentralized and so that would solve that problem a little bit, where that person would manage the vendors in real time. Because otherwise, now it's the finance director or assistant, somebody else. So there's the big picture, but then there's those smaller items, at least the compensating controls, and while they're maybe looking at a bigger reorganization to address all this globally. But yeah, anything that's a segregation, what's your plan or what are you doing to make sure nothing goes wrong every week?
What was that?
Does that work?
I mean, the shorter list may make it more easier for them to manage, you know, first pass and, like you said, deal with some of the operational ones. So it's a lot of them are best practice recommendations. They're not necessarily, they have to do something. This might be a better way to do it. So starting with the internal control, asking for that status is a more manageable request than all of it upfront.
So just to paraphrase here, are you suggesting, starting with the internal control segment of that first? Is that...
Yeah, I think it's just one strategy you could use to get some answers quickly, because if they solve some of those, I think everyone's a lot more comfortable. If, okay, bank recs are done through June 30 and they're actually done through August 30, whatever it is, I think that information is valuable sooner than later for those more significant items.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Madam Mayor, I think I like Councilor McBride's list. I think we could tell them, these are the areas that we're initially focusing on. There's a lot of things in here that could be changed. So if they have to sit here and write responses on every single one of them, it might sort of slow things down. But if they came with, "Here's the priority that we're kind of looking for, let's get that, those answers," and then they could follow up with the other ones. I'm fine with them in writing. I don't know how long... We're saying two weeks. I don't know how long it'll take for them to get answers on this, but as soon as they can, but the priority at least tells them where we're kind of focusing and they could answer those questions quick enough. And as you're saying, once those things are taken care of, a lot of the other stuff will be taken care of, so they don't necessarily have to work on this response way down the line. They could get these seven or eight things done. So I'm fine with Councilor Good's email and I think prioritizing, these are the areas that we see are the highlights. Tell us where you are with those and then we'll kind of take it from there, so.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
I am in agreement with Councilor Jones, Good, and McBride.
Councilor Pachino?
I am in total agreement with the two Daves, and I think they got a good handle on it.
Okay. Councilor Bordelon?
For me, it's pretty simplistic, right? I mean, some of this stuff, even from like the management I've experienced in the medical field over the years, we re-implement this every time with a change of the helm. So I don't really think this stuff really takes time, since it's like, as you guys called it, 101 counting. I don't think it's going to take that much time to implement and make sure you have someone who's checking the payroll, someone who's doing this. There's a sign-off on that and they're doing the... So for me, I say, we're already in November, so call it November. I say, "We start the budget," I guess through the mayor manager, through the manager. When do we start the budget again? Roughly, the numbers start coming out?
Well, we've started, but in terms of the council, you'll get the budget by, I think it's March 15.
Right, sure. So I think it's pretty fair to say like after the new year that they could... Honestly, I watch all the Board of Ed meetings, because this was something that I was passionate about many years ago and I watched. I was happy to see people get on there that were trying to make change. Some of the stuff they've already started to implement, I believe. So it might be very simplistic. So I think they... I'm sure they're going to watch this meeting. I'm sure they're going to get this packet, since it came out on Thursday. And I don't want to come in with a new director and say, "You must. Let's see what she does." So she's got this information, let's set a timeline for an update. That's simple. I don't think we need to give them a punch list. I mean, I think they know that says state statute and the ones that are considered high-level if you're in accounting. It's pretty self-explanatory in the report. So I say like, after the new year, come back to us with an update, you know, where do you stand on these hot-button items? It's pretty simple.
Councilor Merritt?
Yes, I think I go with the general consensus of the entire council and send this to them, let them look it over. If they've implemented something, explain it to us. If they haven't, their intentions and take it from there. And I think a joint meeting should be not really soon, just give them time to digest this report here and go forward from there.
All right, I'm going to put a motion on the floor, just so we have this to vote on. So I'm going to make a motion to send a letter asking the Board of Ed where they are in relation to all documented items in this operations review, though with a priority, a requested priority of internal controls that have been listed, if we could get a response within two weeks on where they are on those priority controls. Is that correct?
May I make a recommendation on that?
Recommendation? Councilor Bordelon, you do not have the floor. Would you please stop speaking when you don't have the floor? Thank you.
Two weeks might be kind of a tight timeframe. The only reason I say that...
Councilor Bordelon, again, would you please stop speaking when you do not have the floor?
It's because I know we're in the midst of getting all of the... It's because I know we're in the midst of getting all of the items together for the auditors, for the year-end audit. And so, I know that the administration over at the board has been working really, really hard to get up to speed on what has been done in the past, where the information is, getting all those pieces pulled together. And they've been really working to focus on that for the fiscal year-end, so I just wanted to make mention of that.
Thank you. Do you have any recommendation for an adjustment of time, Counsel McBride?
I would agree with the finance director, maybe four weeks? How much time do you think?
Yeah, I'm not sure if four weeks will be enough. This is critical. She's right. You know, there's a lot to be done. She's catching up, so...
But just a request of where they are.
Right.
Not asking for a multitude of details, but just quite a bit of information. And your, your response, Mr. Burr?
I don't want this to take priority over the audit work. There's a lot of critical stuff to be done. So, basically, as time allows, by the end of the year, obviously, because audit has to, information has to be in by the end of the year. You know, as soon as possible, following obvious work for the audit by the end of the year, max, kind of thing.
Wanting information? Just a moment. Your question?
Or thoughts as well, is that...
No, you have a point of information.
Sure question. Well, it just makes sense to do it in January, after the audit. That's what I said. So, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion on the floor?
I haven't got, I haven't finished mine yet. Thank you.
But I'd like it to be like January. It makes the most sense. It's after the audit. After the holidays, after...
So, my motion is to send a letter asking the Board of Ed where they are in relation to all the documented items in the operational review, with priority of internal controls, internal control response by end of year, end of year, or as soon as possible. Do I hear a second?
McBride will second. Can I comment on it?
Sure.
I, I think, I understand Counsel Borlon's request for additional time, but I think their request is not to necessarily have them implement changes, it's to see if, and at least in my opinion, it's to see if any changes have already been made. As for, for instance, the AP clerk adding new vendors, that's a simple change in access to the system, right? There's certain things that the finance director may have already been on, so I think it's just a simple updating us on where these, where these things have changed. If things have changed already, it's not a detailed analysis on what they're doing. It's have they made any of these significant changes? So, I think time is sufficient to just give a response as to whether or not they've initiated any of these things, that's all. So, I think a month's sufficient, or two months.
I'd like to make an amendment motion.
Your amendment?
Again, I say, let's another four or five days, right after the new year.
What part are you amending? The timeline to... To what?
To right after the new year, their first, you know, opportunity that we, as a council, we have a January 6.
What date? Because I, I had the last...
We have a January 6 meeting, so how about that date?
That's literally a week later.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, let's get through the holiday. Why would you put that pressure at the end of the year? Most time they take a recess during the time.
Do we have a second on the amended motion?
I'll second that.
Counsel Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're only asking for an update, correct?
Yes.
So, it wouldn't matter, they can send us an update saying, "Hey, I've taken care of this. I can take into that." As they're doing their audit, they could say, "Hey, just to give you a heads up, I already did this part." So, January is not going to matter. So, you said as soon as possible, as soon as you can.
End of year or as soon as possible.
As possible. So, we don't need a timeline. We have an end of the year or as soon as possible. We're only asking for an update. It's not that we're telling them they have to do these things. They do have to do them. They know they have to do them. So, as soon as possible can be after January. That's just my two thoughts.
Counsel Good, did you say after January is good?
No, I'm okay with the first amendment, first motion.
First motion, thank you. Counsel Good?
I'm against, against the motion. I don't, I don't think we need to presume what the Board of Education would consider most urgent or not urgent. I think it's all, it's in their hands. I, I think all we really need to do is give them the information, and I think the updates could come as they see necessary through a simple email to our town manager. I think it's the Board of Education's responsibility 100 percent. We've done the review, we see the issues, the boards see the issues, and I'm sure they'll take care of them in, with their committees and their policies and their procedures. So, that's my feeling.
Counsel Borlon?
So, again, usually there's Christmas stand-down, you know, schools are out for like, like about four of the weeks between now and January, actually. Christmas stand-down, Thanksgiving stand-down. I just simply was saying after the new year, which our first meeting is January 6. It doesn't preclude them from not sending in information earlier if they chose. That was just like the end-all kind of stop for majority of it. They might have this back in two weeks. We don't know. Like, they can send information of the things that are already current. I was just simply saying, they're shut down for like four of the weeks between now and January. So, I just, and to give grace to the, the new financial director, right? Ever, I mean, they just got this report on Thursday. So, to have them go through it, but they might spit something out next week and say, "We've already implemented this, this, and this," and then hopefully everything by January. That's what I was thinking. I was saying January 6, because that's our first meeting of the year. I think it's a nice organic time. It gets them past the audit. And if information or completion is done prior to that, it's no penalty. But to have it at the end of December, I think they're out for New Year's break during that time, like, you know what I mean? I don't even think our meetings are kind of different around that time sometimes as well. So, that was my only reason, is to give it the full air of time. And obviously, like anything, you can submit, it's, there's no penalty for paying off your card early, right? You can send your work in early. That's, that's all. I don't think it's a, a big ask.
All right, well, I'm going to speak. You know what? I honestly would like it in two weeks, to be honest with you. I mean, this is taxpayer dollars. And this is how the taxpayer dollars are being spent and how it's being accounted for. This is like really important. This is not something like, oh, it doesn't really matter, they'll get to us when they can. I mean, honestly, as a taxpayer myself, I mean, this is just aggravating, and it has been for years. Just looking at the school budget and trying to figure it out. And if you try and hold them steady, because it's a school budget and it's always for the kids, and they try and come after you and attack you, you know what? We saw something here. People have seen something in this budgets that are not looking right. We did an operational review. It has come up, there are problems here. It is going to go to the Board of Ed to review these, but let's see where they stand. Have they already fixed some of these things? Have the internal processes been changed? And you know what? Give us a sigh of relief. Let us have a sigh of relief that things have been implemented. Because honestly, I'm going to tell you right now, if you are not reconciling your books for a year, only once a year, imagine all the payments that are going out from the Board of Ed, and you don't reconcile your books for a year? That is huge problems here. I mean, I just can't even believe that that's happening. Payroll's going out and nobody reviews it. These are major problems. As Counsel McBride said, these are problems. These are liabilities. These are red flag issues. So, you know what? I'd like an answer in two weeks. I think she could probably sit down and in 20 minutes, mark this whole thing up and say where she stands on it so far. I bet you she could. And you know what? Put the taxpayers' minds at ease. That's my thought. So, end of year is where I'm at. I don't think it should go, go on any farther. And I honestly, if some people have time off or don't have time off, you know what? For me personally, end of year is more than graceful, I think. So, that's where I stand. Not seeing any other hands, we're going to take a vote on the amended motion to, a motion to send a letter asking the Board of Ed where they are in relation to all documented items in the operational review, with priority to the internal controls, requesting a written answer by January 6. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
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 Abstentions. All right, that fails 1 to 8 to 0. Now for the main motion on the floor. As was said before, it's the ma, a motion to send a letter asking the Board of Ed where they are in relation to all documented items in the operational review, with priority to internal controls, with a response by the end of your year or ASAP, and we'd like that in writing. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions.
Counsel Parker, I didn't hear your vote.
I said aye.
Thank you. That passes 7 to 2 to 0, with Borlon and Good opposed. Thank you so much for all your work. Truly appreciate it, and thank you for spending the two hours with us this evening. Greatly appreciate it. Have a safe drive home. Thank you. And we may or may not be in touch, so, thank you. Your question?
When does the seat change over for the election?
The first Tuesday in December. At this time, we're going to take, I don't know, about a 10-minute recess, and I apologize for the other people who were on our agenda that have been waiting. I apologize, but we're going to take a 10-minute recess. It is 8:35.
It is eight thirty-five. All right, it is eight forty-six. We're back from recess. Up next is two zero two five dash nine nine four, the Main Street Reconstruction. In our packet, this is on page seventy-nine, with the presentation beginning right after that. Hello, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Sure. Uh, Greg Canover, Director of Public Works, and Larry Zeki, Civil Engineer with Wright Pierce.
And Tom, we have a civil engineer with Wright Pierce as well.
All right, welcome. And we have a presentation that we're gonna be putting up on the screen?
Yep. Uh, I'll probably just take a couple of minutes just to give a little bit of, uh, brief background of how we got where we are today.
Okay.
Of course, we're here to talk about Main Street and No Inc., and the road that's, you know, it's in really poor condition. You know, we requested funds to do the design for the complete reconstruction back in FYE twenty-four CIP, and those funds were approved. You know, this, this road has insufficient drainage, uh, poor sidewalks, lack of ADA accessibility. It's probably one of the worst roads in town, so it is a complete reconstruction. Since the funds were approved, we've hired Wright Pierce as our consultant. We've had several, uh, interactive public meetings. First was a public listening session we held in November of twenty-three, where we had a good turnout of residents and businesses, uh, just to listen to their thoughts, concerns about what the project should entail. From that meeting, we developed some concept plans. We had a very well-attended public, uh, meeting here in July of twenty-twenty-four. We had some spirited debate about what should or shouldn't be included in the project. So from those concept plans, we kind of, um, refined the plans to a point where we brought them again to the public in February of this year. After this meeting, we did show layout in the field, some potential new sidewalk locations, so people could see in the field where these sidewalks would actually be. Uh, we received many, uh, emails, comments, had numerous one-on-one meetings, um, with, uh, interested parties, the re- residents and business owners. And so we've kind of, uh, refined the plans some more to a point where we think we're, you know, in a pretty good shape. I mean, by all means, these plans are not finalized yet, but they're at a point where we want to present them to the council to get, uh, feedback, answer questions, and then talk about potential funding. So with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Tom and Larry to do the presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Greg. Uh, good evening. I'll go over basically the brief presentation. Greg touched on a lot of the items, uh, so to kind of move this along, you know, I'll kind of skim through our presentation overview, uh, introductions, we all know each other now, uh, project status, our project area, public outreach, uh, design consideration, current design drawings, and some roadway cross-sections. Our project team also includes Callie Maggio. She's, uh, up in our New Hampshire office, but she's online on our, on the Zoom call as we speak, so if there's any, uh, technical questions related to, uh, the hardscapes or landscape, then she's available to field those questions. Uh, as Greg noted, uh, we started this project back in, uh, the fall of twenty-twenty-three. We went through various, uh, public outreach, uh, listening sessions, design, um, reviews, and further coordination. We're at the end of the, the summer into the fall, so we're in the permitting stage of the project. This is our project overview. As we all know, Main Street, uh, project scope includes, including, uh, Ward Avenue from the, the fire station down to Main Street. Uh, Main Street on the westerly side from Terrace Avenue, all the way down to Front Street, uh, as well as, uh, Pearl Street from Potter Street back down to Main Street. So we had three public, uh, listening sessions. Uh, the first one was in November of twenty-twenty-three, July of twenty-four, uh, and February of twenty-five. This is an example of some of the interaction, um, comments that we received. Uh, we also utilized the town website, uh, for residents to, to pipe in and, and express their, their items of concern, questions, and so forth, and feedback. So this is, uh, a general example of what we use to kind of tally that information, um, put it towards the design, and kind of refine the plan to where we are today. Some of those design considerations included, uh, intersection improvements, ADA accessible, uh, compliance, uh, improved visibility, traffic calming. We also looked into pedestrian cyclist connectivity, parking on-street, uh, as well as adjacent to side streets, uh, and stormwater improvements as far as drainage. During those initial design efforts, we had, uh, various concept plans. Uh, some of the plans, uh, were, were kind of itemized into three different categories, one being an, an economic and most cost-effective option, uh, an enhanced and a historical character design, and then more of a, a complete street, low-impact design, um, as far as like the full, the full sidewalks, full pavement reconstruction, and so forth. Um, and where we landed on the current design, um, I can highlight some of these items on the next few slides. I can go through portions of the Main Street and talk in detail, uh, but the big focus is, um, pedestrian access, traffic, uh, defined curb lines, uniformed traffic widths, on-street parking widths, um, appropriate stop signs and stop bars, and pavement markings for, for crosswalks. So all of the items in category D are on the right side of that slide, uh, fall into the next few slides, but at least we can visualize where we are on Main Street. Um, so this portion, uh, is focusing on the west side. Uh, we call it the residential zone west of Ward Avenue. Uh, so the project scope for this area includes full-depth roadway reconstruction, uh, with complete new asphalt pavement, uh, new granite curbing, defined alignments, uh, for on-street parking, defined travel lanes, eleven-foot wide. The on-street parking, uh, will have a, a width of eight feet, will improve drainage, uh, within this area, uh, repaint the stop bars at the various, uh, crossroads, um, incorporate new street trees into the landscaping, and also, um, within the edge of the right-of-way, define more green space in lawn areas. In the focus point, or the main part of Main Street, uh, we're calling that the, the mixed-use zone. Uh, it's more of a commercial portion of the zone where, um, this project area includes, again, full roadway depth, uh, roadway reconstruction, um, adjusting the, the roadway cross-section.
Is that right?
That's okay. Incorporating new wider, uh, concrete sides, uh, sidewalks on both sides of the street, um, pedestrian sidewalk on, on Pearl Street, granite curbing to realign, uh, the travel widths, again, being consistent with eleven-foot travel lanes. The width varies there, in, in some portions, it's thirty-six feet wide, other portions, it's a little bit narrower, so we're defining, uh, more of a, a straight corridor through this portion. Improving drainage, being consistent with the other portion of the project, uh, painted crosswalks, bike sharrows, new street trees, minimal signage, um, and adjusting the, the cross slope in front of Carson's as it relates to fifty-five Main Street. That portion, we're kind of putting, uh, or at least proposing more of a, a large step in front of Main Street, the, the businesses there, uh, because the, the cross slope at that portion is much higher. That's the southerly portion of Main Street than on the northerly side where, where Carson's is. So when we define the cross slope of the, of the roadway, there will be some hardscape improvements that we're proposing that match up with the existing stoops on Main Street today. And we can discuss that further. On the easterly portion, on the residential zone down towards, uh, the Mystic River, full-depth roadway reconstruction, realigning, uh, the vertical curve where, um, Main Street goes down the hill. Uh, new five-foot-wide concrete sidewalks only on the north side of the roadway. Um, on-street parking, uh, on the, on the southerly side of Main Street, uh, defined granite curb, um, curb lines to define the, the travel widths of eleven feet, eight feet on-street parking, again, being consistent, improving the drainage, uh, adding crosswalks, stop bars to the side street, incorporating new street trees, uh, and, and greenscape along the, the edge of the right-of-way. Sorry, I might have skipped past, uh, Pearl Street. On Pearl Street, from Potter north to Main Street, um, it'll be full-depth reconstruction. We're proposing a four-foot-wide sidewalk on the westerly side from, um, the, the rush, the, I can't think of the name, is it Par- uh, Park- Parkers, Parsons?
Palmer.
Parsons.
Corner Closet.
Corner Closet, from Corner Closet. Sorry, it was a tongue twister. Um, on the, on the westerly side of Pearl Street, there'll be a four, four-foot-wide sidewalk within the town right-of-way. Uh, the intersection along Pearl Street is to remain. So these are typical cross-sections, but they're defined for these, uh, project areas that I described. This is on Ward Avenue, uh, so you'll see a five-foot-wide sidewalk adjacent to the park. Today, there's a varying width between three-and-a-half feet, four-feet sidewalks. A lot of the, the pavement and the, the texturing along the sidewalk is broken, varies from asphalt to concrete. So the project scope is to have new sidewalks from the fire station down to the intersection at Main Street. On the Main Street, uh, east of Ward Avenue, um, there'll be twelve-foot travel lanes, eight, eight-foot-wide on-street parking, eight-feet sidewalks on both sides. The representation kind of shows some of the, the, the street lighting amenities. We're also incorporating some bicycle racks at various locations, uh, some refuse containers, uh, adjacent to the park. Uh, but that would be the typical section in the, in the Main Street downtown part of the, part of the project. This is a, a cross-section east of Pearl Street, showing the, the, the little bit more narrower four-foot sidewalk on the westerly side. Um, the sidewalk, there is a sidewalk today adjacent to the Main Street, Pearl Street, uh, business, uh, then there's a driveway. So the, the new sidewalk would pretty much run from the existing driveway south, uh, to the, to the store. I'm sorry, my, my presentation is, is flip-flopped. So this was the proper slide that I was just describing. This slide is related to Main Street, east of Pearl, down towards the town beach. So this slide shows the five, five-foot sidewalk on the northerly side going down. So this would be a, a new sidewalk along Main Street, um, east of Pearl, down to Front Street. On-street parking on the southerly side of Main Street at various locations. Uh, the project scope includes, uh, redefining the, the vertical curve, uh, but also incorporating the, the existing driveways and aprons that, that taper into Main Street. Um, so all of those grades are, are defined on our current design drawings, and we can go over those in detail, um, but that's just describing what the cross-section's gonna look like. So I touched on drainage. Uh, there's two drainage, um, areas, one flows to the east, one flows to the west. Uh, so we're incorporating new catch basins, new drain manholes, uh, one, uh, stormwater treatment, uh, device to kind of remove suspended solids, um, obviously new drain pipes. Uh, and then the existing outfalls are the locations where the water's discharging today is to remain, so we'll be improving the water quality at those discharge location points. So although brief, um, that is, that is our, our current design plan, uh, so we can open up to, um, any questions that you may have.
Sure.
Uh, maybe before we get into questions, just a real, um, the estimated cost for this project as it stands now is about three million dollars. Um, we will be looking into, um, some programs such as the community investment funds to see if that could pay for, uh, this project or a portion of it. Um, and then there's some other programs that, um, Wright Pierce is, uh, looking into as well.
Counselor Pacina.
Thank you, Madam. Just have a quick question with the elevation of, uh, pitcher for Ward Avenue. All the curbs are described with, uh, the sidewalk and the concrete curb, but on the left side of the pitcher, uh, what is that at the edge of the road? Is that a concrete curb, concrete curb at an angle, or is that a, um, Cape Cod curb?
Um, there today is, um, Cape Cod berm, uh, so it's a four-inch reveal. Uh, there is, you know, it'd be a full-depth reconstruction, uh, so we'd be proposing slope granite edging to, to still maintain that four-inch reveal and tie into the adjacent lawn areas adjacent to the right-of-way. Uh, we're, we're spec- you're proposing a granite, a little bit more robust material, um, for vehicles to potentially, you know, park up against, bump up against, snowplows, and so forth. So, uh, that's with that material.
So it is that, it is granite. It's just gonna, granite at an angle.
Slope granite edging, yes.
Outstanding. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bordelain?
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I just, you know, I've heard of like a mixed review from people, like some, like, really seem really for it. Everyone seems pretty convinced that, that the roads need paving, like, that's, that's what I definitely heard. What's the thoughts of the pulse of the businesses? Like, um, you know, I just think it's important to have the buy-in. I know you guys have done really well with having a three meetings, but there's been like no public comment here for the council, for them to come forward and like air their thoughts or opinions on it. But I was just curious, is, you know, you said it looks like a hundred ninety-eight people based on this thing you gave. I mean, what percent are, would you say are for this type of renovation?
It was tough to gauge at the public listening sessions, because yes, some people are totally for it, some people wanted to just leave it the way it is. Um, we're viewing this now as, as more of like a main- We're viewing this now as more of like a maintenance or reconstruction project, not necessarily reinventing the wheel or anything like that. The focus in front of the storefronts are obviously to provide as much parking as possible, not take any weight, you know, parking in front of the stores. We feel that adding new concrete sidewalks in front of the storefronts will enhance their business, allow easy accessible routes to their businesses and so forth. Offline, after the public listening sessions, we did speak with them, you know, and there is concern about parking. Some of the business owners also had tenant spaces or, you know, other houses within that area where their focus was on, you know, providing parking for the tenants, because it's very limited in tight corridors. So some of, you know, that's some of the information or feedback that I got. Yeah, if Tom want to add, he was part of the listening sessions.
The drawings that we have now are definitely an evolution of, you know, good, very many iterations and options and discussion points that we had over the past two years. And based on all comments, including those from, who I believe were from the business community that gave input, we believe that we incorporated the comments to the maximum extent that we could while also delivering the project goals. So we were trying to, really trying to be sensitive to everyone, including the business community with the design that we have here before you, concept D.
And what about some of the residents that might like, they might change the tapestry of their properties when you add the sidewalks that are, you know, butting up to that side? Were there any concerns about that or the change, or are they losing steps? Or like is there, what is the community, like some of the personal homeowners, like what's going to change for them?
Well, realistically, the only addition of new sidewalk is east of Pearl, down Main Street towards Front. So yes, there will be some interface, specifically grading. As you go down, as you drive down Main Street East, you can see on the left side or on the north side, it's a little bit lower in elevation. So there will be some grade changing of the cross-section as it, you know, compared to today. From a grading point of view, the properties north are higher in elevation, so it'd be relatively easy to tie in. As we get down towards Front Street, as we all know, the residence fence line and so forth is right up against the town right-of-way. So detailed survey information was key data that we obtained from that. Understanding where exactly the town right-of-way is as it relates to the existing features was critical. But we feel that the sidewalk will actually kind of improve that interface between the town right-of-way and private property. It'll allow on-street parking, but yet a safe buffer zone, a safe pedestrian zone. And so a lot of those key factors were factored into the current layout and the width of the sidewalk there, too.
And Larry, this was an area that we had painted out, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah, in order to try and demonstrate what that field difference would be in real time, we actually went out with marking paint to put the basic rough locations of these proposed elements so that, it's sometimes tough to look at a drawing like this and know, how is that going to look for my front step? So we engaged in that effort and then talked about those feelings.
I guess, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I should add, there is another component to new sidewalks. A little section on Pearl Street, on the westerly side. There is an existing fence line, pretty much right on top of the right-of-way. So that will have to be removed and reset, just for the means and methods of constructing the new sidewalk as it relates to formwork, pouring the concrete, and then adding loom to match the existing grade. So there will be a little bit of work, it's all on the town right-of-way, but there will be a fence section that will have to be removed and reset in kind.
I guess, the mayor, Greg Hannover, have you gotten much response from folks? Like, what's the pulse of the community that you've researched?
Oh, we've gotten more response on this project than anything I've worked on the last 37 years. These people are very passionate about Noic, and I understand why. It's a historical village. They don't want it to look like downtown Mystic. You know, we had a lot of sidewalks in this project when we first started, and through the iterations, we've pulled a lot of that back, because it was getting involved in constructing retaining walls, you know, impacting properties more. We've put in what we feel is the minimum to meet the council's complete streets policy, which is, you know, providing pedestrian connectivity between certain points, maintaining all the parking that exists. I don't think we've taken any parking away on this project. You know, we did at first, had some more impacts, but we've pulled a lot of that stuff back. So, you know, like I said, this is not a final plan. We still, you know, intend to go back to the public another time. There's still some details to work out, you know, such as like, you know, bike racks and locations and things of that sort. But, you know, I think we're at a spot with these plans that really represents probably, you know, a good, best fit for this community.
And Noic has its own planning and zoning. Have they said anything about?
They've been in constant communication with the executive commission, whatever, the Fire District Commission there. They've been to all the meetings. So, you know, that's, I mean, we've gotten input from a lot of different folks.
Yeah, I guess it would be great to, you know, for me, like to have an open dialogue here. I think we should open it up to allow people to come and, you know, speak openly, you know, at a public comment, you know, session, or a hearing, you know, just something once it gets more finalized, you know, to hear from folks. I think that'd be great. We've done that in the past with other things. And really to hear the pulse of the community. Again, I've heard everything from, oh, it's going to be wonderful, to, you know, I kind of like the sidewalk because people kind of drive through slower and know that that's like a little village community. You know, they still want their roads, like, graded, but I don't know. I mean, it's, I must say, I've been met with like a bit of a mixed bag of folks. You know, I think for me, as a council, when I'm making decisions like that, I really like to know the input of that community, because I grew up down there as a kid, and we'd rollerblade up and down. I mean, there's no sidewalks, no nothing. I mean, it just, it's kind of what made it unique, was a village. And some people have come up to me, and I'm not saying that's my opinion, but have said, well, this is going to attract more people down there, and it's going to be more congested and turn into like a little, you know, downtown Mystic, or, you know, like, sometimes the best-kept things are the little areas that are untouched. And I'm not saying that their roads don't need to be paved. That's, there's some major puddles down there, actually. But others that have said they're concerned because it's going to look weird. Like, you get a false sense of security on the main road with sidewalks, and then you turn down the side roads and there won't be any. So there's no connectability. It would just be on kind of the main road. Again, just the pulse of people I'm hearing, and it's a few opinions. But for me to make a, I'll wait for my next term, but, yeah. But it's hard to make a decision based on that community that's there. I want to hear them here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Jones.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen. This is great. I'm a huge fan of sidewalks, as I've walked every single street in the town of Groton through campaigning and just generally walking. And sidewalks mean safety, and we do have a lot of senior citizens that live in this neighborhood, and not having them on the street is paramount. You know, I walk on a lot of streets that don't have sidewalks, and you're really vulnerable. So is there connection from, by sidewalk, from the firehouse all the way down to Front Street? In some manner, you might have to cross the street, or is there?
Currently, no, no.
But, I mean, in this, in your plan?
In this plan, yes.
Yeah, so there's a sidewalk that I can walk from the firehouse safely on a sidewalk?
To the Noic Town Dock, yes.
Okay. All right, so that's, to me, that's important.
Yeah, that was the main connection we wanted to make.
Right.
So we want to keep that connection. The other ones were not as critical and were more impactful to some of the properties, so we took those out.
Especially when you go down, you know, around number 80, those houses, 80, 81, 82, in that area, where it's going over the tip of the hill, you feel very vulnerable, sort of sticking out on the road. Can you just talk a little bit about what you meant by grading? Is it grading the length of the road? Is it grading, excuse me, the curb, I don't know, the crown of the road? Which, what are you talking about?
Well, it's a little bit of both. You know, so we took the opportunity to try and provide a little improvement to the curvature, the vertical curvature of the road there. You know, I think as you, as you know, it's a couple of quite different algebraic differences. So in order, it's a good place to have a sidewalk, but we did what we could there to take a little bit off of it. But of course, grading from the edges of the improvements to blend into the people's property is critical and important as well.
Does it change the entrance into their driveways significantly, the points where you're doing the grading?
I'll let Larry go in more detail, but not as much as some of the other options that did. So, you know, like Greg had mentioned, there were necessary retaining walls, structures, definitely more of an impact. And it's easy to see why. I mean, there's quite a bit of elevation difference throughout this, you know, area. And, you know, by coming in with this more of a modest view, there's simply less of an impact. And we're not looking to grade any more than the absolute minimum necessary. There's no sense in doing that, but just through the normal course of construction, you'll need to interface with the homeowners' properties in a natural way.
If funding was in place, what is the ideal season when you would start a project like this? And how long would a project like this typically take?
Those are great questions. You know, of course, it, you know, it depends on who's building it. But I, you know, I hesitate to commit, but I think, I mean, do we think this is a year project? You know, I think it could be a year project, or, you know, maybe it's a year project to binder, and then maybe we come back after the winter and put the finished course down. Depends who your contractor is, and then maybe, you know, you can start something in earnest in the spring. Prepare over the winter months, get your contract documents and your bidding. But that's just a scenario, you know.
But about a year. It's about a year.
Yeah, yeah, I think it could be done.
And do you have, for the merchants that are on there, right on the front of the street, are, do you have plans for how to work around it so people can still get to those businesses? So they're not impeded by, you know, by digging up sidewalks and fencing and things like that?
We would plan on that. And so there's, obviously, there's some logistics that would need to be figured out. And we believe with this modest level of plan, I can't think of a reason why we wouldn't be able to, you know, solve those things.
And then a final question, maybe Mr. Hannover can answer this one through the mayor. Looking at the drainage upgrades, where does the, it looks like there's two chunks of it. Where does that water go at the end? Where does it go? You have it here, but does it go into some other system, or where does it go?
I mean, you know, the hill is divided, you know, the top is about where Pearl Street is. So anything east of Pearl goes into the Mystic River. And anything west goes down to the bottom of Main Street. And there's a swale along the Amtrak rail lines there that eventually works its way out towards West Mystic.
Yeah, there's a wetland area on the town, on the town G.I., yes. It's, we're greater than 200 feet away from it, but you can see that that, the natural topography kind of runs along the rail and ultimately into that well.
And with your system, it'll be more efficient, I'm assuming, as opposed to now, it's just sort of running down the street?
Well, there are some elements of a dated pipe system. The idea is to maintain those drainage patterns, flow rates, and volumes, and in general, to use the existing discharge points more or less. We're not looking to change the way stormwater is leaving. But we are interested in getting it off the traveled way in the managed fashion. And with the items that Larry mentioned, it should be treated to a higher level than it is today.
And then with the defined roadway, we're actually not increasing the impervious area compared to like what's out there today, because there's, like I said, portions of Main Street are really wide. We're still going to have a really wide Main Street, but it's just going to be more efficient and more defined. So having a conveyance from Pearl Street down to the west, the peak discharge will be the same.
Okay, great. Thank you. One more second.
Councilor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question's also, thank you, Councilor Jones, for delving into the drainage upgrades. It's my largest interest in this whole plan. Is, are the upgrades, you know, they're needed because we're having a water backup problem that may be affecting property and travel? Or are we just maintaining the exact same drainage, basically? We're just keeping it the same?
We're keeping the fate of the location of the water the same. But we're going to, we plan on collecting it in a way that would be more in line with current standards. We, and also with the best management practices that we would prescribe to collect that water, you have the added benefit of treatment of that stormwater for pollutants, primarily suspended solids, including, in addition to that, a stormwater treatment device that's been specified to enhance that capability as well. So it would be, in my mind, I have it as a more formalized stormwater system, something that we know is there and where and what size and can be inspected and maintained in the general course of roadway and public works maintenance.
Thank you. That's all.
Councilor Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for all of this information. Most of my questions were already answered, but just a few. Have we looked into, are there any sewer or water lines or any other lines underneath the road that we need to look at while we're doing this so that we don't do this? You're shaking your head. I'll let you answer. Sorry.
Sure. No, sewer lines we're good with, because those come under Public Works. The water lines, it's Noic Water, and we are working with them, because I believe they have, are looking for a grant to replace water lines. So we're kind of coordinating the project, so they'll get that done before.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
Build the road?
I'm sorry?
And then, just also, it wasn't mentioned before, but, you know, it was brought up during the public, some of the public meetings to put the utilities underground in a portion of this, which would be nice. But, you know, we worked with EverSource on some preliminary costs and design to do that, even just from like, was it Ward Avenue to?
From Ward to?
To like Church Street or something, very small section. And it was going to cost probably more than the project is going to cost just to put those lines underground in that little area, because of all the work you have to do beyond those limits.
Yeah.
So that was, you know, taken out of the project.
Granite curb realignment and granite steps. Talk to me, do you mind explaining to me why granite? How much more does it cost, and how much longer does it last?
The intent, there's granite there today and a good portion of like the downtown Main Street. So the intent was to remove and reset some of those historic large pieces that have been there for over 100 years. So that would be the intent, to remove and reset as much as we can. Obviously, there's going to be sections and tie-ins where we're going to have to have new returns. When I mention the word steps, kind of goes back to the question, grades and so forth. So our survey data from, if we're on the north side of Main Street in front of like Carson's Store, and we're looking south, you're about a foot and a half lower than the storefront on 55 Main Street. So when we define a cross-section that has, you know, a uniform, you know, travelway, parking, 2% slope up, 2% slope down, we are low on the south side of Main Street, because the storefront and the stoop of the door on Carson's is kind of driving the design. We can't raise the roadway, otherwise the road would be higher than Carson's. So the design from Carson's going south across Main Street is driving the sidewalk elevation. But at that location, we are low than the storefront's stoop there today. So we're envisioning large granite steps along the storefront, and it matches up fine with Pearl Street, and it matches up fine as we head west, because the grades go down. So it would just be pretty much in front of, I wish I had a laser. I can show you on the screen, but.
Take your microphone.
You got to take your microphone, please. You gotta take your microphone, please?
This portion of Main Street, where on the, oops, jeez, on the plan is a darker line, but that would be a granite curb, granite step, I should say. And it matches up perfect for the tread length and the rise to the existing stoop. So that was a challenge that we had to kind of go back and forth, because then that also ties into the vertical alignment from that portion of Main Street as we tie into Pearl Street, as we tie in towards the east. So the design aspect of this was challenging, but we feel that proposing some sort of granite reveal in front of 55 Main Street would be the best way to kind of meet a uniform cross-slope and vertical.
So on the, you had asked the cost difference and the durability factor, and I don't have the answer on the cost difference. The, it's more expensive than the tuminous curb, either berm or six inch reveal curb. It's certainly more durable and not only from a direct observational perspective, but in the way roads are maintained over the long term. You know, where, you know, a tuminous curb is usually set on the pavement, and, you know, if you're going to redo the pavement, well, then the curb goes. So it's just gone. We all know that, we've all observed, it gets beat up, gets hit by the plows, it, you know, just, it's just the way it is. But that's, you're paying less for it. The granite curb is more of, you know, I'll say, permanent fixture that defines the road's edge. So when you maintain your road, the curb doesn't necessarily have to go away. That's why we're going to try to maintain some of those historic, well, not historic, but the older existing granite pieces. And we've had pretty good luck doing that. Sometimes you can't. Sometimes they just break and they're brittle, and you're trying to move them around and they crack, and it's not worth it. So they're different, and that's kind of an explanation as to the direct durability, but the indirect length of service that those types of durable products tend to have.
Okay. My last question is about, you mentioned additional funding options. Are you able to delve into that at all?
I couldn't hear.
I'm sorry. Additional funding options you had mentioned, other than what Mr. Hanover mentioned, that you might have additional funding options?
Yeah. And what I'd like to do, I don't have a list of what those are, we have a funding specialist. We actually have several funding specialists in our firm, and I had gotten some information regarding the Community Investment Fund. But I'd like to check back and stay in touch with Greg, and then report back about some other ideas now that, you know, we're pretty far along in the design, and maybe come up with a little more formal response on how, you know, our funding specialist feels about that. If that's all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Obrad.
Thank you. Counselor Jones asked a question about, he received the answer on the year. That seems a little problematic, because that would, if you do it for a year straight, it's going to run into the summer season, which obviously there's extremely busy. Is there any way that this project can be done in phases to not impact in June through August timeframe?
I believe that could, yeah. Yeah, and we did work with Greg and the town and the community to find out exactly what those restrictions would be and implement those, and to come together with a sequencing plan that kind of preserves that season. And that's a good point.
Okay. Now, I'm not an engineer, so this may be a foolish question, but I'll ask it anyway. Can you do the project one lane at a time to not impact traffic flow as well, or is that not possible? I'm concerned about the summer months again, or the early spring, late fall, early fall.
Yeah. And sometimes on the bigger projects, that works well. And I'm not saying that it wouldn't work well here. I'm not sure it would deliver the intended result, but I'm more than glad to kind of brainstorm that a little bit with the team and see if there's added benefit to doing that. Sometimes you just end up with a long, half-construction project instead of, you know, a more condensed full-construction project.
Just looking at options, I understand.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I'm glad you said it, because I'd love to know, you know, exactly once we land on what the final element's going to look like. I'd love to get in and out quick with this little disruption everyone is possible.
And newly constructed or paved roads always results in, at least in my opinion, results in traffic increasing, speed of traffic. Was there any discussion on speed bumps or humps, or traffic minimizing calming things on the strip as well?
Yes, actually on Pearl Street, across some potters, going to the sidewalk on the westerly side, there's a speed bump there today, and that would be a raised sidewalk. So we would match the existing sidewalk on the easterly side, a raised speed bump crosswalk going across Pearl Street to the sidewalk. So that would be a traffic calming device that we're incorporating into the design.
But as of now, there's no additional, it's just the existing?
It just, well, you know, we redo it, but yeah, in that general location.
And regarding parking, you mentioned, it appears that you said there's no additional parking, it's the same as the parking is currently, is that correct?
Generally speaking, I'd say.
Yeah. I think what is noteworthy, it's not easy to count the parking spaces that exist today. And, you know, the intent was to strike that balance, but it's in a fairly unorganized fashion. But this would look different in a more organized way.
Okay. Thank you. And I saw lighting, you discussed lighting. Can you discuss how that's going to be different than the current lighting, if at all possible? I mean, it's not going to be, you know, another gaslit lamp every 12 feet, or what's the thought process on the lighting on that strip?
The focus of the street lighting would just be in the areas of, you know, Main Street, Ward Avenue to like Pearl Street. Low mounting height, LID, you know, zero cutoff, shielded headlights, shielded streetlights, sensor type of operation. What's out there today is more of what they call like a Cobra light mounted to a utility pole, where there's, you know, light pollution. So there needs to be more of a modern, zero cutoff, decorative, kind of, you know, fit to that, that style of a Main Street, streetlight.
Okay. I think, thank you for the answers to the questions.
All right. I've attended some of the public hearings, and they are usually well-attended by knowing residents. And they, there is a variety of opinions, and they are very invested in this and into wanting it done the way they'd like it. I'm looking at the public outreach and community feedback on our page, might be page 87 of our packet. Drainage has already been discussed, and some of the infrastructure and the stormwater stuff, but I'm going to go somewhat with some of the more maybe aesthetic issues. It's been mentioned about the granite curbing, which I think is wonderful. And also, just to note, Norwich also does granite curbing, Norwich, Connecticut, because I've seen it myself. I see that there are many people that wanted additional trees, and that has been implemented as well. Will trashcans, because that is noted on here, will trashcans, additional trashcans go down there?
That is correct.
The big belly squeeze ones?
The big bellies, yeah.
Thank you. You've taken care of the stormwater. So you're saying the utility's underground, it's a lot more money and it's not feasible, is that what you're saying?
It's feasible, but it'd be probably like add another three or four million dollars to the price tag.
Okay. And in consideration of this, like, we're worried about climate change and all the storms coming, and utility poles and wires and outages, it's not worth, is there a return on investment to potentially put underground that would offset the cost?
I wouldn't think so, because the, I mean, we're only putting four or 500 feet of lines underground. I mean, you know, there's miles and miles before that that could go down.
Okay. Thank you for your answer. I see the village-style lighting, and aesthetically, they're going to look village-style, is that correct? And that's what I see. There's a large number of people who are looking for that. So the lights will come off the telephone poles, is what you're saying?
They'll be freestanding. Yes, the existing.
They're on a post, right? And they will come off the?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, can you just tell me, some of the added green space that I'm seeing where the, in front of residents' homes, is that due to the road, like, the curving of it or anything like that, and how one side's higher than the other? I mean, is that a necessity, or is that just something that you're doing for aesthetics?
We're defining more of the width of the roadway. So the width today varies from 30 feet wide to 24 feet wide to 36 feet wide. You know, like, it's varying. So we would define 11-foot-wide travel lane, 8-foot-wide parking area. So that line proposed may be a foot or two inside of what's there today. So we would infill that with lumen seed and kind of green, you know, green space, the area from the defined, proposed curb line to the edge of the right away.
Because I see like when you're getting down towards Front Street, and I'm not an engineer by any means, but it bumps out and the sidewalk has to go out further. And I'm just wondering, what is, what is the reason for that? Is that what the residents wanted? Or is that just what they think is a good design? Because I don't know why you'd want to narrow the road there. I'm not sure exactly, other than just slow people down.
So by Front Street, you're talking on the southerly side of?
I can't even see it very well. This is so small. Down from Front Street going up Main Street.
Yeah, you're talking about from the church parking lot down to?
Yes, you have bumps out of the church parking lot.
There's this line of utility poles behind that block that we're going to avoid having to move. And also, the two houses down near Front Street have, they're like right on the edge of the road now, so if we put a sidewalk, we'd actually be like up against their house almost. So we had to move the sidewalk into the roadway a little bit to give them the room to at least be able to pull off and park their car, their house.
And is this what the neighbors wanted? I mean, the people that live there are?
Yeah, they've seen.
They wanted this?
Yeah, this is one we've marked out in the field, and they, generally, those people that live there were happy with it. You know, they didn't, they thought it was a good compromise.
So I'm also thinking, is there not a marina on Front Street as well that people have to get to? And with a turn there and narrowing the road if you're hauling a boat or something, is there, is that going to work?
We actually did turning movements for large 18-wheeler, flatbed type of trucks that could haul boats. So we've modeled it from Ward Ave to Pearl Street, from Pearl Street to Ward Ave. We've also modeled it from Front Street, turning up Main Street to Pearl Street. So although it's a model, we can demonstrate, you know, a large vehicle, WB67, making that turning movement. I've also observed a large truck hauling a boat from Pearl Street onto Main Street when I was on site. So those radii, or radius, aren't really changing. You know, so we're kind of matching the existing pavement at those intersections for large trucks to make those maneuvers.
Okay. And I want to take my second turn right now, please. And then let me just finish up with a few more things that I have noted on this page that I've just lost, because I started flipping around here. And there are some things that I don't notice on here. Because it is a historic village area, and I'm just wondering on the sidewalks, have we considered anything like a stamped sidewalk to make it look like cobblestone or anything like that, to make it more like a historic village?
I think one of the iterations that we had did have like pavers that had that kind of feel to it, but the, I think the prevailing thought was cement concrete was the?
Just flat?
Yeah.
All right. I just got back from like Plymouth, Mass., and it's very historic there. And I was just thinking like it should maybe match the area you're in. And I don't know how the neighbors feel about that, but I thought that would be a nice addition. As well as the crosswalks, will they be just painted? Or can we do some type of brickwork or something to make it different, more of a historic feel?
That was, that was one of the elements that was along the way in the kind of presentation, one of the options. And I think the feedback, we ended up, prevailing feedback was the painted.
Why is that?
People just, they wanted the simple, they don't want?
The neighborhood wants a simple, they don't want like?
Fancy, they don't want it to look like downtown Mystic.
Okay. I just thought historically, they'd want it to match, maybe their historic village. And then, are we in the permitting stage, permitting approval right now? Because on your, it says in the summer, you went for permit applications, it says, and then in the fall is for permitting.
Yeah. That was a schedule developed for the project at the onset, really not knowing how far the extents, what the permitting obligations would be based on impacts, thresholds, you know. And as the project has taken shape and it seems to be fairly visible, the permitting obligations seem to be fairly modest, you know, basically local approvals, probably, you know, through the Department of Public Works. So we're not expecting an exhaustive permitting process unless something changes.
Okay. And what are you looking for from the council this evening? What exactly are you here for?
Just an update, because, you know, we've gone to the public three times, we just want to, you know, have you see what the plans are and answer your questions. And then also just put it on your radar that, you know, we're going to be probably looking at the CIF funds for this project, is number one. And then, you know, Tom and Larry get back to me with other funding opportunities that we'll probably come back to the council with very shortly. Because we're getting to that point where, you know, we could be ready to go out to bid with this fairly soon.
All right. Interesting. Mr. Burt, you had something to add?
I think you basically just answered it. We're going to be talking about CIF as the next item. Do you think this is ripe for the December 5th deadline application process? Or do you think, have we applied, that that'd be okay? Or do you think you should hold off for another round?
I mean, you know, we were talking about it, I don't see a reason not to continue investigate and possibly doing this round unless, you know, somebody feels, otherwise, I think the documents are worthy of that level of review.
And it doesn't, if this was submitted to the, for CIF, this would not mean it's locked in exactly like this? This would be the funding for?
Yeah, yeah.
They knew some changes would be made?
It's a pretty long process till we get approval, if we did get it done then.
Okay.
Counselor Portlin.
Thank you. I guess for me, again, for me, it's premature to like lock anything in today. Like, I just feel like, I respect the public comments that you had, but nothing's come here in this house. We should have a hearing on this. Based on what's been presented so far, I want people to go up to the podium and have their time, and just like you would if we were going to do any other developments, right? That hasn't happened. So I, I don't know that I can vote on something without really hearing the pulse of the community. I mean, I guess I could go knock each door and mail it, which, you know, is not hard to do. But I think like they need to have their voices heard here at the council chambers. I don't, I mean, this grid is wonderful, but it's speculative, right? Like, I'm hearing your version of what you think people want, you can't give me hard numbers. And I think people, it should be something that's put in the newspaper and put out so people can come here and discuss. So I think for the council, you know, that's what people said they want, right? It's not my neighborhood, it's not my backyard. I'm up here elected as one of nine to do the voice of the people. And so without having the voice of the people, it's hard to make decisions. So we haven't had anybody come before us. I haven't had, I haven't had any people from the neighborhood or Fire District or anything come here, they haven't been invited yet. So let's put that on the agenda and get them out here to air their grievances or acceptances or whatever versus, here's the development, and here's where we are. Let's see if we can move it forward and get funding. I have to say, this is the first time it's come before me, and now we're already moving to the funding page. But we haven't, we missed the important part, which is the community. And again, not saying I'm not for it or against it, I just feel it's not my yard, not my neighborhood. I need the people to be, you know, tonight, there's not even public, I see a few people from the community, an owner of one of the stores there. Can they come talk to it? That's what we need. So for me tonight, I can't make the decision tonight based on that, without that information that's vital. So for me, we need to, we need another step to this process that hasn't happened. And without it, it's, to me, it's wrong. If you're for it or against it, it should have, be put in the paper, some of the renderings, there should be a full report, there should be an opportunity. There should be an opportunity with public comment to come in, a little hearing, a lot of people talk. This is a major thing. Because some people said to me, can they just pave the roads? And so you're going to pave this one area and what about all those little side roads? What, is there, I guess my question, is there a plan for those side roads to be paved? That's my question.
Well, we're doing a portion of Pearl Street and Ward, but yes, in the future...
My time is still running. I've stopped at like about fifteen seconds left. Yeah. So...
But as part of our paving management program, as other roads come up, do for paving, we'll be paving those side roads, yes.
Because it would just look funny, honestly. You know what I mean? You have this big mega Main Street and the side roads are going to have potholes and divots and, I mean, is the, is it better to invest the money in all the, the road structure? I don't know. I need to talk to the people that are there. So I feel like it's dead in the water until I hear someone.
I'd just like to clarify, we're not voting on this tonight. I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Just clarify that the next item talks about...
Mr. Burt, did you want to say something?
I was going to mention the same thing. We're not looking for a vote and there'll be a next step in the public process. And we've had great turnout at these and I would, if you really want the public input, then you also come down to that next step.
I agree. Because that's usually what we do. We have a public event and counselors show up and that's where we find out information.
We have information?
Thank you. Counselor, your question?
Would it be wrong to invite them here under public comment? Do they mayor, do the town manager?
We typically have a, an event and we are usually there when it comes to a public works event like that.
But it's one-sided. I, I'm asking...
Counselor Bordelain, that's not a question.
My question is...
It's been asked and answered.
We can though, correct? We can invite them here and put them on our agenda properly.
That is not typically what we do. We have an event.
We have. You don't have to have an event. It doesn't have to be a big dressing.
Counselor Bordelain, you're now out of order because you're doing dialogue instead of asking a question.
So my question was, can we have them on our agenda? Can we?
We could do whatever the council wants to do.
So we can?
So I would suggest it come after that next public...
Sure. Let's bring them around the table.
You can have a public hearing and have them come to the podium.
Absolutely.
Counselor Rusk, did you have your hand up?
No, I did, but it's actually a question for the next item.
Thank you. Counselor Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems as though you gentlemen have been doing your due diligence. You had public listening sessions in two thousand and three, no, two thousand and three, in twenty-three, twenty-four, and this past February. You're going to have yet another one coming up. When is that, the next one?
Probably scheduled, I'm thinking, November, December.
November, December?
Yeah, once...
Of this year?
Yeah.
Okay. And it seems as though you've had seventy-five engaged participants in these meetings, nine-hundred-and-eighty-three people online have visited this project and are aware of what's going on, and you had a hundred and ninety-eight total submissions with questions and comments. I don't think this is about us on the town council. I don't think they need to come here. They've spoken and they're going to yet have another chance to speak. I don't need, think we need to demand that, that people of No-Inc need to come here and talk to us. We can definitely go to them and listen to them. And I think that's what we should do. So with that said, this is a great project and I like what you guys have done and I love that you've listened to, to the people of No-Inc and you've got a great consensus so far. Thank you.
Counselor Merritt.
Yes, for one, I, I do believe there's been several sessions to discuss this project over the past year, maybe two years. And I would all for being, having a special event, as it's been put, to have the public here to speak and may, maybe that would change the plans a little, maybe it wouldn't. I don't know. I have one question about the turning from Main Street onto Pearl Street with the right-hand turn contract to trailers. Has that been thought of?
Yes, yes. We modeled that.
This is a right-hand turn?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Okay. Come down Ward Street and then...
Yeah. We, we modeled that, Larry, Dennis, if I'm wrong, but we modeled it because during, during the sessions, the point had been brought up many times and we wanted to understand. We watched observations, we, as part of the strategy in, in having the improvements on Pearl Street where those improvements are shown as well.
Thank you. I'm all in favor of another open forum, shall we say. However, if you keep having these, you're going to keep making changes and you're going to move away from the start date and perhaps the funding. And you've got to be, you've got to be careful with that. You've got to get a balance on that. Otherwise, everything you put into it is going to fail. And that's all I have to say.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work you've done. This is, this is tremendous. I like everything I've heard. I'm in favor of another public hearing, another social, whatever you want to call it, events that you have where you hear from the residents. Sounds like they've been out and about a lot. I'm also in favor of having a public hearing. I think there's nothing wrong with having that. We've had them numerous times in the past on many different projects. So I don't see why, at least I would vote in favor of a public hearing just to hear the voices of the residents of knowing. But I'm in full support of the project and thanks for everything you've done.
All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. So thank you for coming this evening and we look forward to seeing you in the future. Or at least the new council will. Thank you. All right. Up next is two zero two five dash ninety-two, the Community Investment Fund grant application. This begins on page ninety-nine. There's no motion made in advance. Mr. Burt, would you like to go over this?
Sure. As a way of background, the Community Investment Fund, CIF, twenty thirty, is a State Department of Economic and Community Development, D E C D, grant program enacted to promote economic or community, community development in municipalities designated as public investment communities or alliance districts. The CIF supports transformative economic development projects within fifty-four eligible underserved municipalities statewide, so we are one of fifty-four eligible, to bolster social services, promote equity, and jumpstart long-term economic growth. The CIF will award up to one hundred and seventy-five million each fiscal year across two or more application periods or rounds per year for fiscal, for capital improvement projects and planning projects. The CIF program is currently authorized to distribute up to eight hundred and seventy-five million over a five-year period that began in twenty-three, F Y E twenty-three, and is scheduled to end in F Y E twenty-seven. We're now entering round eight. So the town recently, round seven, had applied for the city's Shore Ave Seawall for about nine point eight million, which was unfortunately unsuccessful. That was round seven. We're now entering round eight out of ten planned at this point. Staff, we've had numerous meetings with different legislators and people involved actually with the CIF program trying to get input along the way on different ideas. Generally, the input received included that we should limit applications to about three million dollars to maximize chances of getting something. Planning grants have a decent, a pretty good shot of getting approved with construction projects that are shovel-ready, faring pretty well. Mixed input on athletic fields, generally it's an uphill battle from what we're told. There's not much chance of getting athletic fields and you're probably going to have to apply several times to have any shot. But there's no really true definitive rules on these things, but that's the information we've gleaned. So as I mentioned, there are currently eighteen rounds of grants planned with round eight application period ending on December fifth. We have to submit our applications by December fifth. A lot of work goes into these. We have the bandwidth to do two applications. That's the most we can do right now for what we actually have staff time for. Plus you probably want to kind of let them know what your priorities are anyways. We need direction immediately from the council on which two, one or two, you don't have to, you could have one of the four possibilities we've presented. You could always come up with other ideas, of course. But we do need, this is a long process. We have to have input right away. The four projects we've identified as potentially application-worthy, Route one seventeen, infrastructure improvement, that's a planning grant for two hundred and fifty thousand. That would be improvements on Route one seventeen extending Gravity Sewer north to Pahiga Net Drive to Route one eighty-four, along with a multi-use path along the east side of the road. We do anticipate extension of sewer would support economic development in that area. It's also important to note, the extension of sewer would have the added benefit of protecting the waterways from the potential of untreated sewage from ever being released in the area of the reservoir in the future. The plan would be, we would apply for the, the planning grant. If successful, probably it would take a couple more rounds, maybe the tenth round before we can apply for construction dollars. It probably wouldn't be the very next round. We would need some time to get through the planning process. I highly recommend this being one of the two applications we do and we have a very good chance of getting this. Second is the Athletic Fields Task Force. Master plan originally was identified as ten million. Again, you're not likely to get beyond three million if you want any shot at all. But in athletic fields, again, everything I've been told, you're not going to get a first shot. You probably have to do it several times. So I'm not sure that's where you want to be going this time and it's up to you. Main Street reconstruction is advertised. It takes, it took five or six months before we got notified of the last round, I believe, for, so there's plenty of time to get through this process to finalize things before we would be awarded any kind of grant. You have quite a bit of time to, to do it. So that's an option. It happens to be three million dollars, which is what we've been told is the max, as well as it being considered almost shovel-ready. And then also brought up is the Shore Avenue Seawall. Again, we just filled it about the nine point eight million range. If you did choose to reapply a second time, it should likely limit that to three million for the request. So those are the four projects we've identified, of course. Again, you know, depending on lead time, it has to be fast. We could entertain others, but it is a very short time. And we just learned that application deadline, so that just came out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Burt. The question is, is that three million apiece or is that only...
A piece.
A piece, okay.
You're not likely to get two big ones in one round, but, you know, it's not possible. There's no restriction against it.
I know my thoughts, but I, there are three, but one I would like to reduce and go ahead and do. And the other one, Route one seventeen, could that be a CIP?
It could. They seem to like, from what we've heard, they seem to like when you do the planning through them and it kind of leads, leads the pathway to getting that funding later. So if we're interested, I'd say you should probably go for the CIF grant.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Clarifying question?
Your question? Mr. Burt, did you just have a question? We're talking about it or off? It's your choice. Your question?
My clarifying question was, I just wanted to, through you, to, I just wanted to check her counsel Parker correctly. What was the first one she said? I didn't, I didn't catch it. I apologize.
I don't think she stated it. She didn't state it clearly.
Oh, okay. She didn't state it. Thank you.
Counselor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm just going to kind of put my thoughts out there. I like the idea of the Route one seventeen infrastructure improvement. It can lead to further economic development. I spoke with one of our state reps today who said that this is definitely a project that could likely get funding. So the Athletic Fields Task Force, again, spoke to the state rep who said the likelihood of getting funding for this is very slim, especially since our, or our resolution hasn't gone through yet, or the, what's the word?
Referendum.
Referendum, thank you. It's late. My apologies. The referendum hasn't gone through yet. So I absolutely support going for funding for this, but I think we have to wait until after the referendum is approved. And we have skin in the game. That's my feeling on athletic fields. Main Street reconstruction, I was all in for this until they said tonight that there may be other funding. So I would like to hold on that one for other funding in hopes that we can get it elsewhere. And the Shore Avenue Seawall, I would propose that we reapply for that under the recommendation of our state, one of our state reps at three million dollars. That's where I stand.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our state rep was very busy today.
He was.
And so he, he said all exactly the same things, one seventeen. He had just had two of these passed in New London. They're very common. So that was, and as you just explained, it's a pathway. And he very, talked a lot about the Athletic Fields Task Force over the last few, few weeks and said the governor just does not like fields and he just doesn't, doesn't go there. It is an interesting thought about the Main Street. I was sort of in favor of that, but I guess it's, it's worth waiting to see where we, where we come up with.
We could always go in the round nine. You know, if we didn't get funding earlier, I would say round nine for sure, though.
Okay. And his, also his comment on the Shore Avenue Seawall was, even though we lost, he said to stay in the game and keep, keep doing it, that they, he's been hinted at that they want him to keep applying for it. So somewhere down the line, possibly that'll come. So I, I will agree with Counselor Rusk on the, the one seventeen and the three million on the Shore Avenue Seawall. Okay?
Counselor Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Rusk and Counselor Jones got in the stone by thunder because those are the two uptick items that I liked. The two hundred and fifty thousand for the, for one seventeen and the, I think the three million for the Shore Seawall would be a great addition and help out a great deal. That's why I'm at those two.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I completely agree with the sentiments of the other counselors regarding the CIF and using that for the Route one seventeen. I have a lot of familiarities with this, with New London and the planning grant. Certainly is the way to go and hopefully it leads to future money and transform that area in the future. So I'm in full, full support of that. I'm not, however, in favor of the Shore Avenue Seawall project because I don't consider that a transformative economic development project. I think that's the definition of what these funds are supposed to be used for. I don't see that as a transformative economic development project. I do, however, see Main Street Reconstruction No-Inc a transformative economic development project because it is revitalizing that entire area and I can see them approving that before a seawall in the city of Rod. So those would be the ones I would be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. I am, I'm in favor, number one, of the Route one seventeen infrastructure. The athletic fields, as it's been stated, I think we should wait for referendum before we do anything. I have a question for Mr. Burt. On the city seawall, is it typical for the state to grant awards for money that has already been paid?
I don't think it's out of the question. I, I don't feel confident answering that, but I have been told there's been some indications they might be amenable to it. So I've also received indications Main Street would score likely really well, too, so...
Right. So I, if the city's Shore Avenue Seawall was put in, would this town have to do a lot of work or would the city just, because this is their project, basically, they're just, would go flow through us?
Yeah, we're just a pass-through for funding, other than obviously we need certain reports and things.
So if we actually picked three, the town could take two on and they could take their own on and basically just flow through us?
Well, yeah, I just don't know if we have time to do three applications or not.
But we would only be doing two, is what I'm saying. Because they would have, you could make them be responsible.
Yeah, we're the ones putting it in. We'd be involved in it, but potentially, yeah. But I think, I'm not sure it makes sense to put two large pri, you know, you should kind of pick out where your priority is. I would recommend not doing two large ones, but...
Because I'm also in favor of, my priority would be the No-Inc. And while there may be other funding somewhere else, shore, the Shore Avenue Seawall could be more funding somewhere else as well. So, but the No-Inc one has always been, at least on my priority, of trying to go for these grants. And I think last round, we waited because we're like, we could go in the next round. And I don't want to push it off again. When we are on round eight of ten, you're saying, there's only two more rounds left. So I don't want to risk that it, like potentially missing out on that. So me personally, I would be in favor of the No-Inc one. I don't have a problem with this city one if they want to do, if they would do ninety-five percent of the work, I think if you could probably find out about that. But if they're doing ninety-five percent of the work to submit their application... 95% of the work to submit their application, I think we, would you be able to handle the other two?
Likely yes. Yeah, I'd go on to check the planning, but likely yes. Because, I mean, a bulk of the work's been, obviously, it's going to be shrunk, we did get some check things on what they would like to see further, from a further application, so we'll have to work on that, or relay that to the city, but likely, yes.
Council Good?
Yes, I'm in agreement with Councilor McBride and Mayor Franco, I think, 117 project, and no-ank Main Street is really important to get on this round. No-ank Main Street, while there may be some changes in the dressing of the plan, we know we need the paving, and we need the drainage done, so I'd rather see that secured, funding-wise. Thank you.
Council Borderline?
Thank you. You know, again, for me, probably like, usually always seem to be different side for some reason, but, is the city mayor coming to speak to us about the sewall at all, or, we've had no updates? I'd love to know where it stands, and, through the mayor, to the town manager, is there a chance that he's going to come sit at this table and speak about the debacle?
I believe this is a city issue, and they're looking for, to apply for the grant, and we are the pass-through for their, their ability to do so.
Right, so it's great to be the pass-through, but if I'm putting my name to something, I want to know what I'm putting it to. So, I guess, is the city going to come here and talk about their sewall?
It's entirely up to, that's been brought up before, the council has not yet directed that to me.
Right, I brought it up, I guess I wasn't in the majority. But, again, this has been going on for quite some time, from the start of this whole thing, to the end project, to where it sits right now, we haven't had any updates. We've had speculations, we've had pass-through comments, all of it's speculative, but we haven't had any real engagement on any government level with our, you know, our municipality that's our neighbor here, that's part of our, it just doesn't make sense to me. So we just had, you know, the presentation from the no-ank, we don't have athletic fields here, which they have presented, so I will give them that, and we have talked about the infrastructure on 117. So, again, yeah, from a state level, like, and you said, well, you've heard from, like, I guess, from whom? I guess through the mayor to the town manager, who have you heard from that? I mean, I guess that means a lot, like, who did you hear from that you think?
We've talked previously, well, with our local legislators, in terms of Representative Gieske and Senator Summers, and then we've talked to actual staff with CIF, we've talked to a couple of the other elected officials involved with CIF, so...
Okay. Yeah.
And I will say strongly, most of them said zero chance on the athletic fields. Representative Gieske was the most optimistic with almost no chance.
And did we know where he got that information? Anything particular, like, I don't know, I just feel like it's one-sided, right? Like, I feel, like, no one's here talking to us that this is all, to me, it's second-hand information, so, again, I would like an update on the sewall. We're the pass-through, there's some councillors up here who actually live in the city, that is in our backyard, would love to know, something I could actually take interest in. Like, you know, not that I'm not interested in no-ank, but, like, there, we need to know. And there's been no formal updates. But yet, we're being told, from the other side, the Main Street, but we've yet to have a public comment here, outside of their workshops, where people can come before us and speak without, you know, these developers and designers taking the center stage, let the people come here and speak organically about what they want and what they feel. So, and then, my next question is, is why can we only do two grants? What do we, why are we handicapped in that area? What are we missing that we need?
I believe it's staffing and the max that they are capable of doing at this time.
Well, that's a concern if there's a lot of grant funding, and the only thing holding us is that we don't have enough people to get it out, so that's another thing that should probably...
Is that correct, Mr. Burr? Mr. Burr, is that correct?
Yeah, like we said, maybe if the sewall was a third sense of the bulk of the work's been done, it would be hard pressed to do athletic fields, and plus, 3 million would not go real far in that second phase, basically take the building down, I'm not sure that is going to get anywhere anyways.
Would 3 million go far on the sewall? How much are they behind?
Your time has expired.
It's...
Your time has expired, that's in the negative. Council Merritt, you had your hand up?
Yeah, with all these deliberations, all the questions, it's very good in the advice. However, there's still a cost to all of this, and the athletic fields has been on the table for quite some time, and the cost keeps going up and up. And no matter what grants we ask for, you may not have enough money in the end, and you'll have to table the event. I'm in favor of all four projects involving the city in the sewall, but I'm in favor of getting it done now, or moving forward.
So we can, we have a lot of business ahead of us, and it's after 10 o'clock, we're going to have to take a vote to see if we continue our business. I would like to do, go around, and starting with Council Parker, would you let me know which, in your priority list, would you tell me which is your priorities?
Point of clarification?
Council Parker?
Point of clarification?
Your clarification.
We're changing our normal way, we haven't had our second round to speak, and now we're going...
I am asking...
I'm just asking what we're doing, that's all.
To take a consensus of figuring this out, that is, I'm clarifying it right now, I'm going to give everybody else another turn.
Perfect.
But would you tell me your priorities, so I can write this down, and we can figure out a way forward? Council Parker?
One and four.
One, like, as a priority, one, and then four?
Yes.
Thank you. Council Good?
The 117 and no-ank Main Street project.
One, and then three. Council McBride?
One and three.
Council Jones?
One and four.
Council Rusk?
And four.
Council Pacina?
One and four.
Council Borderline?
I'm still undecided, actually, I'll wait till the vote, I'm still undecided.
Council Merritt?
Two and three.
I am one, three, and then four. Option two has one. Option three has four. Option four has five. So I would assume that anything that would be over the majority, which is five or over, would, should be able to move forward. Council Borderline, would you like to state which items you're interested in?
Well, 117 is, I think that's no-ank for the infrastructure, that one has been properly presented, in my opinion. I mean, I could say I want to move forward with the Main Street and no-ank, but, like, do I want to, is that locking, that's not locking us in?
Not locking us in, it's just requesting money for a project that's probably going to happen. I mean, it still needs to be done.
I mean, I think that's a little premature to say it's going to happen.
I think it needs to be paved, and probably stormwater. I will say, option number forty already has, number four already has five.
Yeah, I was definitely not voting for four.
But if you go on to number three, we can add that to the list, because it currently only has four.
I just don't know that it's appropriate in this round, since they're not even done with their deliberations, and they haven't come here, they haven't had a chance to have all the folks come here and talk to us.
We're not passing the project...
Again.
...in finalization.
Putting my name to something that's going up to...
Requesting money for a project.
Right, we're putting our name to something that's going up to the state level, everyone's had whispers about what they heard from the state that would work, but again, we haven't heard from the people on things, so we're just like...
Do you want to start her time?
I mean, yeah, please. Do we know that no-ank really wants us to put our $3 million money in it, or they just want their roads paved? I mean, because I've talked to some people who said, this is a nicety, but they're fine with their small little village, and they like it like that, because people slow down and respect you, you can kind of walk in the streets, and others who, you know, may, but, like, they're saying all of their roads need to be paved. So would it be better if this money was spent to pave all the roads, versus the niceties and the, you know, the caveats and the, you know, glamour and glitter on the roads? I don't know. I haven't had a chance, I've talked to some of the people that have been attending the meetings, unfortunately for me, some of the nights that the meetings have been going, I haven't been able to attend, and, so that's where it's nice to bring things to the council. Other towns do that, you know, they have these little breakout sessions, and it comes back here, and there's a press release, and there's an option to talk about it, but that's all I'm asking. Let me hear from the people. I don't live in that neighborhood, I love it down there, but what do they want? They might tell me, no, they want athletic fields, if this is their, do the no-ank people know that these four options are the options tonight? Other than if they read the agenda? Do they know that tonight, we have to choose over these items? Would they say, just pave my roads? Because my neighborhood's not getting new light fixtures and sidewalks, and, you know what I mean, like, I need paving, too, like, they need paving, they need paving, they need water, yeah, drain. But, again, to throw money onto the sewall, when we haven't had a presentation for me, I can support it possibly, but I need a presentation, I'm putting my name up there. Again, we're going for grants, but I also have an obligation to make sure the grants we're going for are viable options, and that we're putting things forward that make sense. So, does no-ank know that we are deciding tonight if we're going to fund, go for a grant for them over athletic fields, or the sewall, or, I just feel like this is kind of like, all thrown together in a, and it hasn't been, for me, it hasn't been properly vetted out. So with that, I can support number one. I can support no-ank in their ambition to get their roads paved. Beyond that, I don't know what else they want, as far as what these nice gentlemen came and presented, this beautiful caveat drawn out, I mean, unfortunately, everyone's in the business to make money, right? They're coming to present, they're hoping we take the golden slipper, of course, they're in the, I mean, everybody is, like, you make a sale, you're making a deal, they're selling a deal. I want to know what the people in no-ank want. And we haven't done that. So to ask the state, and I have put my name to something, and I run into these state reps and other people, and I speak to at the state level, and they say, Council Borderline, we saw you vote, you put on, you're really, they're really loving that Main Street scape, you put your name to it. So it's not necessarily going to go through, but I need to back what I'm putting up here. I don't have any information about the sewall, through the mayor, through the town manager, how much are they short currently?
I'd rather wait and get a definitive answer.
We don't even know. See? How am I supposed to, like, pick something? We don't even know. So, I need more answers, that I'm not getting.
You're not going to put out a second for no-ank? So, basically, if we don't get the grant, taxpayers pay for it, then.
But there's other options. I'm not saying I don't support that, I'm just not, this whole thing...
Thank you, your time has expired, you have not chosen anything, so I will assume that that means no.
Well, the way it's written here, it's the full plan.
No. No, it's not the full plan, I have explained this earlier.
That's what it says here.
You have chosen to not hear what I am saying, and you keep reiterating the same thing you're saying, and I have asked Mr. Burr, I have specifically said it here very clearly, you are not approving the plan, you are saying, here is a, here is a rendering, basically, of what we are doing. We have done the stormwater work, we've done the paving work, we plan on doing the sidewalks, we plan on doing this type of project, not saying specifically how it's going to happen, or where, or anything, and asking for the funding for it.
Point of clarification.
Your clarifying question?
If we were to do this, and no-ank says, just pave my roads, do we have to give that money back?
You still have to do the stormwater.
Do I have to give the money back? Because we're not in the scope.
If you take out the niceties, it's not going to be a huge difference, you're still going to have 2.5 million plus, so, you know, the niceties, we have plenty of time to figure that out, it's really a non-factor for this discussion.
It's just, I mean, I can support paving their roads, is what I would say. I'm not sure where I stand on the full package. That's where I'm at.
All right, so I'm just going to ask you one last time, I just want an answer. Are you supporting requesting a grant for Main Street reconstruction in no-ank?
As written as number three, with all of that? Because that's what's here, that's what I'm asking here, and you keep saying, but the way it's written here is, all applicants, 3 million, reconstruction Main Street, also includes replacing existing sidewalks and adding some sections, new sidewalks, ADA accessibility...
Point of order.
Is this, is that what I'm voting on?
Your point of order.
The time, the time has been taken.
Yes, I agree. Could you please answer the question? Do you support number three, yes or no?
And it would be as written? I'm just asking before I put my name to something, am I supporting it as written?
We can move on with a no, then, because you will not answer.
Of course, because you won't, you won't answer my question.
But you will not answer.
Am I supporting it as written?
You have the same information the rest of us have.
Answer the question.
You have the same information the rest of us have.
Point of order.
Thank you. Your point of order.
Again, out of time, we need to move on.
I asked a clarifying question. If I support number three...
So no-ank is going to fail, and we, I guess, we will go with number one.
I have a point of clarification.
Your point of clarification.
Or question, whatever it's called. I have a question on the voting, because everyone voted two times, or voted for first and second, and I believe...
You could vote for whatever you wanted, I put three out there.
So other people can vote for three as well?
You could put whatever you wanted out there.
I just feel that anyone having three votes and anyone else having two votes...
A time, a time, a point of order, is this our second turn? I just need to know for the time.
Any clarifying question?
I have a point of clarification on the order of the vote.
Clarifying question, I will take it as a clarifying question at this moment.
That wasn't a question, that's why, I'm saying...
It was a question, it was a question regarding the vote. Some people voted two, one person voted three, and I don't think that's...
What I questioned was, what are your priorities? And you were allowed to list them however you chose.
If we'd known three, I would have done three, but you didn't say three.
That's why I'm asking the question.
I didn't say two, either.
Well, I would put a three.
All right, let's go through the list again. Council Parker, please list your priorities, as many or as little as you would like. Between one and four options you can choose.
Could we ask for that in order, just, let's say if we run out of time for applications, I'd like to have some direction on what your priorities are.
Okay.
In order.
One, four, three.
Council Good?
One, three, three, in order. You did three twice. Yeah.
You can't vote three twice. Council McBride? Council McBride?
I don't know if that's possible. One, three.
One, four, three.
Council Rusk?
One, four, three.
Council Pacina?
One, four, three.
Council Borderline? Are you not going to answer?
I think so. This, this doesn't make sense to me. I said one. I think, I think support three, I'm not supporting it as written, I'm waiting to hear what the people want, so I feel like this is, I'll support money to come in to help with the roads.
One and three?
We'll be in more discussion on that.
One and three, or no? Or just one?
I think that is one and three.
Thank you. Council Merritt?
Three, two, and one.
All right, so from what I'm seeing, Mr. Burr, we have number one, three, and four, all getting at least four people that are assigned on to it. So, if I were you, I would please ask the city to do the bulk of all of the heavy lifting on that.
I'm pretty sure they'll make it happen.
And, I'm sure it won't be so hard for the town, because it's already happened once, and you probably have all the same data to be able to maybe type into whatever application you have to put it in. All right, thank you. We're going to move on now. Madam Mayor, do we need to take a vote? Oh, you know what, it is 10:24, and you know what, I'm going to tell you right now, we have the veterans thing up next, and we have the finance director and the assessor sitting here waiting all night long to speak to us about this, so please, please take that in consideration when I take the vote on, it's 10:24, and we have... It's 10:24 and we have to take a vote on if we want to continue. Is there anybody here?
I don't want to continue.
That does not want to continue.
I would not. And it's no disrespect.
I'm hearing one person, so we are going to continue. All right, up next. 2025-995 is the new local option, Veterans Tax Exemption Discussion. To be clear, I am recusing myself from any kind of motions discussion. I will continue taking care of the meeting, but in transparency, this applies to my mother and basically my parents, so... All right. Hello, sorry for keeping you here so late. Would you like to introduce yourselves and give us an explanation of what's going on?
Sure. Dee Morrison, Director of Finance.
And Mary Gardner, Town Assessor.
So previously, we had been here in the summer presenting one of the new local options for veterans that pertain to surviving spouses of veterans, which the council did vote and adopt. But then there had been some discussion on wanting to get further information on the additional new local options. So Mary has put together a nice summary. There is a lot of information. So she was going to touch on certain items and then open it for discussion and maybe at a future date if everyone's had a chance to look at it and put some questions together, we could come back if the option to vote to adopt would be there. So I'll turn it over to Mary.
Thank you. So you know, 2024, the state legislature opened up this new benefit. At the time, the state's records said that Groton had 27 veterans that would qualify. What we've learned since then is we are up to 108 veterans that qualify for the 100% permanently and totally disabled exemption, which is the exemption that fully exempts their dwelling. And we are anticipating right now for the 2025 grand list, we are up to about 150 100% permanent and total disabled veterans whose dwellings will be fully exempt from taxes. I'm not going to touch on everything on this document, just highlight some of the things that you probably would want to know. Starting with the 25 grand list, there is an application that every veteran has to fill out with every assessor's office. It's due by January 1st and that's so that we can be sure that we have a current VA award letter that comes through with the application. On the bottom of the first page, there's just a summary of the few local towns. I reached out to their assessor's offices to see what their councils had adopted. Stonington adopted recently capping the median assessment of the dwelling only. Waterford adopted to extend the dwelling exemption to Gold Star spouses and what's called TDIUs. And we can talk about those in a couple of minutes. New London, nothing yet. Legerd and Preston are considering the median assessment cap. Norwich is waiting until after the election. And then I reached out to a couple of towns on the other side of the state and they have also... One town has capped the median assessment of the dwelling and the other town is considering it. So there are four new local options for the towns to consider. The first one is the already adopted by the town council where we expanded the benefit to widows whose husbands, military veterans, deceased before 10/124. Another piece of that legislature would allow you to cap the assessment to the local median assessed value of real estate. And another piece of that 100% P&amp;T exemption would be to include the exemption on up to two acres of land. So there's four new, I guess, expansion of benefits and they all include the option to include land, include surviving spouses who passed away prior to 10/124, and include capping the assessment on the dwelling. So it's kind of like a layer cake. So 100% P&amp;T. The second exemption would be allowed towards individuals who are... They have a percent of disability, it's not necessarily 100% through the VA, but they are considered unemployable. And it basically means that due to their inability to substantially gain employment but they're not 100% P&amp;T, that the state felt that they might have an opportunity for this exemption. And so that's the TDIU piece. These are folks that are not necessarily 100% P&amp;T, but they're being paid as though they're 100% permanent and total because they're unable to keep gainful employment due to their service-connected disabilities. The third option is a Gold Star spouse, which allows for a surviving spouse of a veteran killed in action. And again, full exemption on the dwelling. You can include up to two acres or you can cap the median assessment. And then the fourth option is a Gold Star parent or spouse, which would be a parent or a surviving spouse of a military person killed in action. And then that program is a little different. It's income-based. So it doesn't really fall into the other three categories. But I did want to point out that if you do consider adopting the median assessment that I would request, you consider using the median assessment at the year of a revaluation so we can lock it into place and just use the same number for the next five grand list instead of having to manually recalculate it every year. And the median assessment for 2021 on the dwelling only is $136,000 and the median assessment on the dwelling only for the 24 grand list was the same number. If you were to bring in the land, it would be a different set of numbers. So it's a layer cake. You can look at adding land, you can look at capping the median assessment. And I think those are most... And you can look at opening it up to the TDIU folks. That's it? That is it. All right. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Gardner. Can you explain to me the median assessment for dwelling? Is that the median of the whole town? It's not their house, it's... Or just go ahead.
So I did it a couple of different ways. The median is just the middle number, it's not an average. So if you have a range of 10 properties, it's number five, basically. And what it does is it removes the outliers, the lows and the highs.
So is this of the property in the town? This is the median assessed value of all the property in the town?
Well, there are options that you can look to. The statute basically says you would look to the median assessed value of residential real estate. It doesn't specify dwelling or land. But because the 100% P&amp;T exemption focuses on the dwelling, I would think you'd want to stick to just the dwelling and not include the land because you may have condo owners or mobile homeowners that don't have that benefit, so...
So it's a standard number? So if somebody had a house that was $2 million and somebody had, you know, a mobile home or a small house that was only $125,000, you would pick the number 136 for both of those properties?
It's the median. So you have an array of numbers, 10 numbers. The median is the number in the middle. So it removes the high and the lows. So when the legislatures wrote the language, they stuck to median, not average.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand what the median is. I'm just wondering what's the base of the property that you're using to create the median? Is it...
So when I ran the numbers, my 21 median assessment for dwellings only was for single-family duplex, three-family, four-family, mobile home condos. Not commercials, just residential structures.
So I guess my question is, if somebody had, a family has a $2 million home and somebody has a mobile home for $100,000, they both use the same 136 number?
Yes.
That was... Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at. That's the number, that's the number.
It's late, so I might be slow on the uptake here.
So the second question I have is, in option one, it's a surviving spouse of a veteran who died prior to October 1st of 2024. In option three, the Gold Star spouse allows for a surviving spouse of a veteran killed at any time in action, if they were killed yesterday. So option Gold Star spouse would count for a veteran yesterday. Number one would count for a veteran 10/24, but it would not count for a veteran, somebody from yesterday. Is that correct?
No, it would... Gold Star spouse, and I'd have to look a little more at the statute. I don't think I saw anything about limiting it from the date of killed in action. I'd have to read the statute on that.
The council did adopt an option one going forward. So you're not about to go further back to January 1st, January 50th?
I'm more talking about people who have died, who have been killed in action after that date. You know, this is 2025, so if somebody was killed this year, do they qualify for this at all?
I think they would, but I'd have to read the statute. The other piece of all of this new local option is none of it goes into effect. None of it hits the grand list until the 10/125 grand list. So none of it goes back to 10/1... We haven't certified the October 1st 25 grand list yet. All of these go into effect.
So I think it would be important to know how locked in that 10/124 date is as opposed to somebody that's killed this year?
I think you can probably, for now, set that aside because that has already been dealt with by the town council. And the reason for that was, I don't know that you were here when we had those discussions.
I do remember some of these... I may be a while back, like two years, three years.
Just real briefly, when the state set the statute for the 100% P&amp;T veterans, for the surviving spouses, the way the language was written, your spouse would have passed away on or after 10/124. So it only... Basically, the state created two classes of widows. One whose husbands passed away after 10/124 and they would qualify. And then another one where if your husband's spouse passed away before 10/124, you would not qualify for the exemption. And so the state kind of came into a technical fix and opened that option up to town so that if they wanted to expand the surviving spouse of a veteran, they could.
So it's filled in, it's filled in people who died in 2016 or something like that? That's what...
Yes. So Groton fixed that, saying all of our widows are eligible for this exemption.
It wasn't, it's not really clear here, but I know, I understand. You just said, "Everybody before this date is good also."
Yes.
Okay. And then number four is really about the kids? Just seems...
It's a parent whose child passed away. And to be honest, we don't know of any Gold Star spouses or Gold Star parent or spouses that we have in our town.
And then my last question is, I'm just trying to find it. Somewhere in here it says, "Real estate or auto." Here it is. It's actually in the first, it's in the first paragraph right here. This exemption is granted only to dwellings, no land... No, it's actually the second line. Either real estate or motor vehicle. So is it a real estate or motor vehicle?
So the way the statutes are written, if a veteran does not own real estate but owns a car, the exemption can apply to the car.
Okay.
And if they don't own a real estate and a car, then it would go to their spouse's property.
Okay. But if they own a house, then their car doesn't count?
Correct.
It's just one of those things, depending on what situation fits them the best and is most applicable to them.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Good.
The TDIU, do we have a number on how many people that affects Groton?
We do not have a number. We know there are several. And I think what we'll have to do, if the town adopts that, is we'll have to notify all of our veterans who are not 100% P&amp;T, which would be about 1,500 letters that we'll send out saying, "If you think you qualify, let us know." That's the same thing we did when the 100% P&amp;T option was enacted. We notified all our veterans.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Counselor Boardman.
Oh, thanks. I think it's important to look at this as a whole and whatever, having a discussion. Obviously, not making any decisions tonight. It's kind of just a read-through tonight, is my understanding. But you can't put a price tag for losing a loved one or becoming 100% disabled from your service in the military. So with that, you know, I'm always a strong component to it. In my family, my cousin's son, so because he was younger and not married, she is a star family member. She doesn't live here in Waterford anymore, but she's down south. I'm not sure what she gets down there. But it does happen, you know, when some men and women under certain ages that don't get married so the benefit moves to the parents, just like their life insurance policy or all their rights, really. It goes to that person who signed up as their next of kin. We are a military community, so it'd be great to kind of visit these and look and kind of get an idea. But, you know, I'm in full support of looking at ways to support our military here, as always. Thank you.
Counselor Rusk.
Can I just ask a question? First of all, thank you for being here this late, it's really late. Can I ask a question about the median assessment for the dwelling? So I get that it takes out the land, but does it take out the location? So if my house is in certain areas of our community, the property value is going to be higher versus if it's in another area? And I remember speaking to a gentleman when I was knocking doors two years ago and he said, "Eventually, I'm not going to be able to stay in my home based on the taxes." Not because he had a large home, but because of the location he was living in and he had been living there his entire adult life. So I don't want to see our veterans who happen to have purchased a home in an area that now the assessment is significantly higher than when they purchased the home to suddenly lose that home because they're totally disabled and we're only going to say $136,000. So I know we're not making a decision tonight, but I just want to kind of put that out there and see, if you take out the land, are you assessing the house still based on its location?
I think our cost tables are pretty much the same throughout the town. So I think the house, it's what affects the value. For the land is the location. For the house, it's more the quality of construction and the size and the age and the depreciation. And I think that's pretty standard throughout the town.
Okay, thank you for that. I agree with Counselor Boardman on what we can do for our veterans and our Gold Star families is very important to me. But this is a decision we need to make tonight, but thank you for all the information.
Counselor Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mary. Now, hello ladies. What if the veteran has multiple homes or multiple cars?
It has to be... It has to be his primary residence.
Okay.
So if he has multiple homes, only the house that he lives in can qualify. And if he has homes in other towns, it can only be the home that he lives in in the town that's his resident.
And as far as the vehicles?
It's, it's either the car or the residence. It's not both.
If he only has vehicles, no, no homes?
Then it's one vehicle.
Just, just the one. And I'm having a really hard time with this median number. I know we have million-dollar homes in Groton, and unless we have a whole bunch of $10,000 homes, I don't see where the median is 136. Explain that to me better, please.
I ran an extract of all the dwelling values because it doesn't include outbuildings, which are pools and garages and sheds, just the dwelling. And that is the median assessment of dwelling in Groton.
And how many, how many dwellings are there in Groton when you pulled that?
About 11,000, a little over 11,000.
And what was the highest value dwelling? Do you recall?
I know which one it is. I don't know the value. It's not Groton Long Point.
I don't care where it is. I would just tell you how much it was.
And actually, I'm thinking of the highest value residential property, and it might be more in the land than the dwelling. But at the top of my head, I don't know. It's a few million.
All right, then. I suppose if you have a few million-dollar home. Okay, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Counselor McBride.
Just a question, because this is somewhat confusing. The $136,000 that was the median was the assessed value. If I'm doing my calculations, if I'm looking at currently 13.6 million assessments of 108 veteran houses, that's only 126,000, right?
13,635, is that the number?
Yeah, divided by the 108, that would give me an assessment of 126,000.
I take your word for it.
Okay, so that would, so what's in place? Because I'm thinking this was a huge number, 338, but it's, it's really not. It's actually less than if you implemented the median assessment because the median assessment's 136.
So the 13,6, 13,600, is what's on the books now, which is not the median assessment. That's the total number of assessment that we exempted from the 24 grand list, which includes dwelling values, not the land, not the outbuildings, just the dwelling and any cars that qualify. So I don't, I don't really think you want to do a comparison of the 13,6 to the 136,000.
Well, I'm just trying to get a flavor for what the 108 veterans, what they're realizing in savings. I mean, I see the town is losing 338,000, but what's the benefit that they're getting in comparison? You know, what's their assessed value on average compared to the assessed value of the median assessment of 136?
We had that as a discussion before. We had some samples of properties, and, you know, it ranges anywhere from a small mobile home to a, I think you had pointed out, somebody that might qualify for a, was it $6,000 tax reduction, if you remember the conversation?
Yes.
Because of their dwelling value. So it's a range. It certainly depends on the value of the dwelling, but the 13,600 includes cars, too. So their average assessment is nothing like 100.
So that's what's driving it?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for that. I guess my, my concern is, or question and concern is, if this were to go to effect, would you be concerned about an influx of veterans moving into town?
We've already seen it.
Does anyone ever capped it, or not capped it, but stopped at a certain date and not allowed people to come in and buy a million-dollar house and get free taxes?
Yeah. No, the statutes don't support that.
Don't support that, okay.
But we've already seen, we've had people call and say, I understand Connecticut has this benefit. And I'm, I'm, we dealt with a guy who was going to try to file a deed before October 1st so he could own the house in order to get the exemption. So, you know, veterans are aware of it.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just, so I can understand, because this is always, assessment stuff is confusing. So are you saying that the house will be for this process, for this law, is worth 130, assessed at 136,000? That's the?
I'm telling the council that if you choose to adopt the median cap, it would be at about 136,000.
And so what's the, the taxes on 136,000?
I can get my calculator. So just the town's mil rate, not the districts. And everything you do affects the districts, too, right?
So 23, right?
24, 81 is our mil rate, right?
Yeah.
It's 136,000. $3,400.
So, let me understand this. So their houses normally would be assessed, let's say, at $200,000. We're now going to say their house is assessed at 136. So they basically just save $3,400? Is that?
Their house might be assessed at 200, but we're going to remove $136,000 in exemption, in assessment.
So they would pay taxes on 70, basically $70,000?
Correct.
So what's that, just for argument's sake? So it's like a credit, is really what it is. They're getting a credit off.
$3,400 reduction in their tax bill before they receive it. $1,700 is what they would pay.
Is what they would pay, okay.
Plus whatever, yeah.
Okay, so that's, so you take their house, you take basically 136,000 off of it, they save $3,400, and they pay the rest?
Correct.
That's how it works? Okay.
Yes.
Great, that's good. And then the options here, we have four options, 2021 GO, 2021, they're all different depending on what sheds or pools or things that are added to it. So can they pick any one of those options, or is one assigned to them? Because one's 136,000, the other one's 218,000. How do they, how do they make the decision which one of those, or do you make that decision?
The, the 100% PNT statute that was put in place for the October 1st 24 grand list limited it to the dwelling. So we had to manually look at every veteran record and figure out if they had outbuildings. I had to manually take those off the record to calculate their exemption, which is only on the dwelling. So to be fair, in my mind, it should be limited to just the dwelling. And, and that would be the option that the town has, to cap the median assessment for the dwelling. This has become a really supremely intense administrative issue from my office.
But the state changed, the state changed the law? Is that, am I right? That you can add sheds, pools, and garages?
No, no, that, I'm, I'm explaining to you the difference that we deal with in my office, which are the components of our value, is land, dwelling, and outbuildings.
Okay.
So I don't want you to think that outbuildings are included. I don't want you to think right off the bat, land is included. Right off the bat, the dwelling is included. That's, that's what the benefit is given towards for the 100% PNT veterans.
So why do we, why do you have these other options here?
I'm, I'm telling you that it doesn't include, it does not include. Maybe I worded it wrong? Oh, yeah, I worded it wrong.
Okay.
Yep. So it does not include the OB Wives.
So if I look at this list, I should just put a line right there. This is the only one that really counts. And all these other options with outbuildings and pools, they don't count.
Right.
So they, in reality, they shouldn't be on this piece of paper.
And, and I, to be honest, I think what I was trying to show you was the difference between the regular median assessment and if it was just the dwelling.
But in reality, you only look at the dwelling?
Yes.
So you've never looked at the land?
Just for your information. Yes.
All right. So I'm going to cross that out because I don't need to be confused by something that doesn't apply.
Okay.
Okay, that makes, that helps. Thank you. That's great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Rusk.
I didn't have my hand up.
Counselor Portman.
Thank you. Again, you know, it was said, well, you know, maybe people will move in. Again, a lot of these people who are in total disability or even experienced death, like, you can't put a price tag on that. But, you know, not everyone's signing up to join the military. As my son says, there's, right now, there's a shortage. There's people that don't, younger folks that don't want to make the commitment. So people decide to sign up and protect our country. I think it's what we do. And if they decide to move here as a result of the benefit that they have, it's benefit. But the benefit they're getting comes at a cost of what they sacrifice. It's not just free. As some people will say, freedom isn't free. So I, I don't see a problem with it. I think it's something we should do. I don't think it's a hardship to the town. I don't think it's, again, we are a naval base, and we are military friendly. And I just think that this is something that the state has offered, and we should look at ways to enhance and help, especially in the trying times as we look and see that our country is facing and folks are in need. So again, how you get this, it's pretty, you know, it's not just an easy thing to get, right? Total disability from, from work, being injured or some sort, and death. So that's what we're talking about. So I guess that's, you know, important to remember when we're looking at this and making those decisions. It shouldn't be taken lightly, in my opinion. And it's, yes, people do call around because some of these folks are on fixed incomes and are trying to find a place that's veteran-friendly, not abnormal, right? You've got military people that are getting on submarines and want to know if they want to stay here or not. Yeah, so, thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to be sure everyone's keeping in mind, too, that what's not collected here gets spread to everyone else, including those least able to pay also in town. So you get, there's two competing issues there.
So this is for you to look at, and if any thoughts come to mind that you need verification on, feel free to let John know, and we can answer your questions.
All right. Well, thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome.
And have a safe drive home, and thank you for staying so late.
Same, same to you.
10:57.
Motion to adjourn?
We have three more items that are very simple. There's a motion to adjourn on the floor, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you raise your hand if you're in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? That fails 3 to 6 to 0. All right. Up next, 2025-991, Town Council, 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. This is on page 103. Counselor Good, Ashley, Counselor Parker, would you like to take that one?
I will. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the 2026 Town Council Regular Meeting Calendar as attached. And I'm going to preface this to say that it's all Tuesdays, January 6, February 3, March 3, April 7, May 5, June 2, July 7, August 4, September 1, October 6, November 3, and December 1 of 2026. All meetings begin at 6:30 PM in Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road. On the first Tuesday of each month, meetings can be held in person only, virtual only, or a combination of the two ISO moves.
Second.
Move by Parker, seconded by Jones. All right, before we begin, I'd like to note that on Tuesday, November 3, that's probably an election day.
It is, ma'am.
Excuse me?
It is, ma'am.
It is, it's not a council election day, but it is a
Congressional.
Congressional, president, not, no, oh my goodness. It's midterm, midterm election. So I don't know if anybody would like to move that day?
I would like to move to the fourth.
So there's amendment?
I will second that.
To make it November 4, move by Pacina, seconded by Jones. Any comments? Counselor Pacina.
Would there also be any support to move May 5 to May 6, so it doesn't fall on Cinco de Mayo?
No.
Enough said.
Counselor Portman.
Is there a primary?
I don't know. It's, do you have that date?
You won't know that?
I do. It's August 11. August 11.
No, we're good.
It's on the next one.
Okay.
All right. Let's vote on this amended motion to change November 3 to November 4. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. FSS 9 to 0 to 0. Now we're going to vote on the whole motion altogether. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. FSS 9 to 0 to 0. Up next, 2025-992, Town Council Committee to Hold 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. Counselor Good, would you like to take that one on page 105?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to recommend a resolution approve, approving the 2026 Town Council Committee to Hold Regular Meeting Calendar as attached. Dates, all two dates, January 13, 2026, January 27, February 10, February 24, March 10, March 24, April 14, April 28, May 12, May 26, June 9, June 23, July 14, July 28, August 11, August 25, September 8, September 22, October 13, October 27, November 10, November 24, and December 8. All meetings will be at 6:00 PM at the Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex, 134
Did you say 6:30?
Long Point Road.
Did you?
6:30?
6:30.
Okay. Move by Good, seconded by Parker.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I have permission to just confirm August 11 is primary day?
Sure. We're checking to see if August 11 is primary day.
I can't read anymore.
Yes, it is.
It is, yep.
I make a motion to amend this to move Tuesday, August 11, to Wednesday, August 12.
Second.
Point of information?
You have a question?
Would that be on the night of RTM, which is the second week?
That's my RTM night.
Do you want to do Monday, August 10? Okay, I amend my amendment to Tuesday, or withdraw my amendment and put in an amendment for Monday, August 10.
Second. Pacina.
I don't know if there's a run lead for us to change primary day, but as a council. But anyway. Okay. Take a vote on the amended motion to move August 11 to August 10. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Wait a minute, I, I haven't even said approve yet. Can you raise your hand if you're an aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Counselor Rusk, how did you vote?
I voted yes. Where's the answer? I have my hand up.
All right, then you were five. Do I have 5, 3 to 0? No, I'm off, I won.
6, 3, 0.
Who were the opposed? I'm sorry. Who were the opposed? I'm sorry. Me, Franco.
Parker and Good.
Parker. Good. All right. Going to vote on this as all together, the main motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. That passes 9 to 0 to 0.
Madam Mayor, can I read the next one?
One more.
Excuse me, can I read the next one? I'm just trying to get a solid idea tonight.
It's Counselor McBride.
Oh, good to speak.
Counselor McBride, page 107, Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee, 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. Take it away.
To recommend a resolution approving the 2026 Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee Regular Meeting Calendar as attached, all Tuesdays, all two, 2026, January 20, February 17, March 17, April 21, May 19, June 16, July 21, August 18, September 15, October 20, November 17, December 15. All meetings begin at 5:30 PM in Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road. On the third Tuesday of each month, meetings can be held in person only, virtual only, or in a combination of two.
Second.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Parker, by our speed reader.
Sometimes that's...
Well done. All right. Do we have anything on here, any concerns?
No. I suppose nobody cares about St. Patrick's Day, either? No. Okay, fine.
All right. So seeing no amended motions, we're going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes 9 to 0 to 0.
Motion to second.
Second. Moved by Rusk, seconded by Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. That passes 9 to 0 to 0. It is 11:05 PM, and we are adjourned.
I told somebody I was...